All right, good evening and welcome to the Canton Planning Commission. Thank you for your indulgence in giving us a few minutes to get going, but let's get going. I'd like to, where's our flag? Oh, it's around the corner there. Okay. I'd like to begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, let's see who's here. Commissioner Zubor, will you call the roll?
Oh, shoot. Yes, I will in a second. I'm so sorry. Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel is absent. Commissioner Graham Hudek, Hudek, sorry.
Good evening.
Chairman Green is here. Oh, sorry, I shouldn't say that for you. Commissioner O'Conne is absent. Commissioner Perkins is absent, and Commissioner Zubor is here.
Okay, and we have our community planner, Patrick Sloan, and we have you all out there. Welcome, welcome, and welcome eventually to those who watch this taping. We had minutes on August 10th. Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved. Support.
Got a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Eggenberger to accept those minutes of August 10th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okie doke. All right, tonight's agenda consists of three items, one of which is a public hearing. And on that public hearing, you know, we do entertain the audience, and if you have comments, questions, or concerns, that's your time to talk about that. And then we've got some future land use map amendment discussions to take place. Any late additions from staff?
No, Mr. --
Okay.
No, Mr. Chairman, the only item that I do want to mention is that there was a public notice previously issued for Havens Orthodontics Plan Development, and there have been some plan revisions in the meantime. And even though Havens Orthodontics has been advertised, it won't be heard tonight for a public hearing because it has some plan revisions. So that doesn't impact the agenda before us, but for anyone who saw the public notice who may be interested, that will not be heard this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any additions from the commission? All right, do I hear a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So moved. Support.
I got a motion to accept the agenda by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll proceed with the first one. Again, it is a public hearing, and you are invited to engage in that with us. It is the Home Depot Outlet where we're considering a special land use. This property is located south of Ford and east of Lots. Patrick, could you give us some more definition?
Sure, absolutely. As you noted, the proposal is for an outlot in front of the Home Depot on Ford Road. The applicant proposes to split 1.82 acres from the Home Depot parcel and construct a commercial development with two buildings. One will be a restaurant building that's just over 2,000 square feet with an accessory pickup window, and the other proposed building will be an 8,500-square-foot multi-tenant building that's also proposed to have a restaurant on the end with an accessory pickup window. And a proposal for the site is up on the screen. The site is located on the south side of Ford Road, east of Lots Road, and north of the existing Home Depot. The site is located in the C3 zoning district and also in the Corporate Park Overlay District. The applicant requests special land use approval for the following uses listed in Section 6.08 of the zoning ordinance. These include a carryout restaurant, a standard restaurant with an accessory pickup window, medical dental clinic, financial institution, business service establishments, childcare center, general retail, office building, training, education, apparel, bookstore, stationery shop, convenience grocery, drugstore, barber shop, hairstyling salon, clothing alteration/ shoe repair, and personal fitness/health centers. About three and a half years ago, on March 6 of 2017, the Planning Commission had approved a requested modification for this Home Depot to reduce its number of parking spaces from 703 to 514, and therefore allowing for the creation of the proposed 1.82-acre lot illustrated on the special land use plan. This plan proposed is a conceptual plan, and if it's approved, then a site plan must be submitted, at which time the site plan would be reviewed by the Planning Commission and the Township Board. The proposed site will be accessed by the existing drives from the west and to the south, and there are no additional curb cuts onto Ford Road proposed. There are a couple of items that we have for the special land uses. All of the special land uses that are proposed are explicitly permitted by Section 6.08D of the zoning ordinance, with the exception of accessory pickup windows for standard restaurants, which are on the east sides of both proposed buildings. We have a similar condition farther to the west, the Aspen Dental Building, where last year there was a site plan approved, and there was an accessory pickup window on the east side of that building. Additionally, the Starbucks at the northwest corner of Lots and Ford Road several years ago had an accessory pickup window approved for that multi-tenant building. So in the past, there have been accessory pickup windows that have been approved on multi-tenant sites. One of our concerns with the accessory pickup window on the east side of the eastern building is that it's designed to function much like a drive-through with both the length of the lane as well as the location of the menu ordering boards. And like I said, it's a similar condition to two other buildings, but I do note it just because if it is approved in its current form, then we would be restrictive with whatever tenant comes in to occupy it. So if it were a typical fast food restaurant, that's not something that would be approved because fast food restaurants are not allowed in the Corporate Park Overlay District. But if it's a typical standard restaurant that has an accessory pickup window, that's a bona fide accessory, then that's something that we would consider. So if the plan is approved in its current form, we would be looking at the uses on a case-by-case basis as they come in and apply. On the other hand, the western building, that is designed like a typical pickup window because it's a shorter drive length and there's no proposed menu ordering boards. So the ordering would be done probably on a mobile app or calling it in, and then without the menu board, somebody would have to order ahead of time and then drive up and pick up their food. Or it would have to be a quick carryout like, think a Little Caesar's restaurant with hot and ready's where you pull up to the window and a lot of the food is already prepared for you. So again, that would be something on a case-by-case basis for what's appropriate for the site. So if the proposed layout of the eastern building is acceptable in terms of the length of the lane and the locations of menu boards, then we would recommend approval of the special land use because it meets the criteria of Section 27.03(c) of the zoning ordinance. And some of those criteria start on the bottom of page two, and it includes criteria such as being adjacent or being compatible with adjacent uses, not changing the ingress and egress of the site, also replacing an unnecessary parking area with a more productive use that will serve the community, as well as proposing uses that will not interfere with or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings. So with that, that concludes our report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Again, this is a public hearing. The project sponsor will be there shortly, and if there is someone from the audience, we ask for social distancing, say to, for them to use that microphone over there so we keep the project sponsors over here and the audience over there. With that said, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Support.
Got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Project sponsor, welcome.
Good evening, Chair. Brian Eamon. I'm not sure if this is --
There we go. Now it is the time.
Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commission, Brian Eamon on behalf of the project proponent. As Patrick did such a great job laying it out, I'll really just answer the questions you have. I just want to point out a couple things. First, this proposal in general, as he mentioned, it's been years in coming, working with Home Depot and other players, but it particularly reflects the township's desire to help mitigate and minimize these seas of asphalt that we see that were built years ago prior to the current parking load standards that most retail places are opening, are operating under. So this project would help bring some green space, vegetation, landscaping, and improvement, some vertical structure to where there's just now a sea of asphalt. So it'll help in the township's long-term effort to eliminate that. The second aspect that he's already referenced, I just want to reinforce, this particular request is exactly consistent with the request that Starbucks came in under and then ultimately the site next door that you approved a year ago as it relates to the, you know, the accessory nature of the uses involved, including the one that has the drive-through ordering board and the proper stacking for that. We do acknowledge and accept the restriction that you would not be allowed to have a fast food. It's essentially a standard restaurant type of thing if you're going to have that use. The one thing we all know that we didn't know a year ago is that we don't know much about what's needed in terms of drive-through anymore. You know, with COVID and everything else, obviously, the township went to great measures to try to work with current restaurants and current business owners in the city to find ways for them to more safely deliver their services and products using, you know, carryout windows, all kinds of different deliverables. And so we do not have any particular tenants in mind, but we know we're trying to get the site designed as functionally as possible so that it'll meet the needs not only of the tenant but of the community as times change and as we confront new, potentially new pandemics and those kinds of things. So other than that, I'll simply be happy to answer any questions that may come up during the public hearing or from the Planning Commission as you consider the item.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we have opened the public hearing, so I'm going to go right to the audience before we go to the, oh, I thought somebody said something. Before we go to the commission, any comments, concerns, questions from the audience? Yes, sir? Please go up to the mic.
Good evening, Robert McCausland. This was revisited, like you said, off the original site plan for Home Depot about four years ago. The problem being is the detention is not described on this, and the engineering will come later, probably after the approval's already been done. The problem is if the Home Depot is to have to bring the detention requirements of Wayne County stormwater up to today's standards, it's going to be a tough, it's going to be a tough slog back there because we have, we have other conflicting projects who are fighting for that detention space. It's a good time to look at shared detention in that area as it comes together. Instead of this piecemeal workmanship, we should have an idea of shared detention where if this parcel needed detention space, there would be additional detention in the back that would accommodate it, and to the parcels to the west and to the parcels to the, with the reconstruction of a lot of buildings, you don't know what the requirements will be, so you're better off to have too much than you are not enough. And the same philosophy is what allows this lot to go in. I remember when that Home Depot got built, they said, man, it's a lot of parking, that's a lot, that's a lot of parking that's required. And they said, well, 20 years later, here we are carving it up, just like we are at the Myers, but I don't think we're, I don't think we're looking at the detention aspect of it. Because as the properties are built, the engineering just ties into the existing detention, which has never been upgraded, and that particular piece is terrible in the back. I mean, it just, it would never fly under today's standards. So that's one thing you'd have to look at when you grant the special land uses. I would have to make it contingent on the engineering of the detention to today's standards. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond to that, appreciate the concern raised and certainly the sentiment as regards to a more regional approach or area approach to retention. This site, in fact, was designed accordingly. It was ultimately adjusted a little bit when Imagine came in, but the fact is, the existing pond and system is going to actually be improved by this project because we're going to have less impervious surface than we do now. We're actually getting rid of asphalt and putting in green space, sod, trees, and things that will create filtration for water and water quality treatment that doesn't exist today. So it's going to actually improve the water, the quality of the water, and reduce the amount of water coming off of this particular size of this parcel that's going into the existing pond. Therefore, Wayne County has a particular provision that says unless you're going to add to the flow, then you don't have to, you don't trigger the upgrade requirement. We're actually improving and reducing the flow, and so we don't trigger the Wayne County change standard requirement for the site, so we're going to be fine. But we appreciate it. We've, we obviously have done some pre-engineering with the county and appropriate authorities to make sure of where we would stand, and we've already worked that through with them, but I appreciate the input.
Okay. Thank you very much for that, and thank you very much for the question.
I'm Dana McCausland, 2011 Lots Road. I would disagree with that because if you want to go back far back, 1994, when the Home Depot was built, they were required to have those number of spaces, but they also had plotted for outlots but not additional outlots. They plotted for the Logan's Outlot and what was the Don Pablo's Outlot. So when they, you're going to split this 1.2 acres off, the old sea of asphalt argument's not getting it anymore. That's, that's yesterday's news. What's really happening here is Home Depot reduced the parking because they added the tool rental and the tool and the truck rental along. That's where, if you go back and look at the history, Home Depot started reducing the number of parking so they could get the addition to the building and the additional to the business and use those parking credits. They used a number of parking credits for the fire lane, they used a number of parking credits for their semi-truck parking, for their delivery trucks. They used a lot of their parking credits. So now to start carving outlots out is not a fair compromise for anybody who is to come into that area and build a new building from scratch. Because now you're basically under 1994 standards, and if they ask the county, the county's going to say, well, okay. But if somebody goes in there today and you say, hey, I'm going to put a X amount squares building here, they're going to say, no, you have to have today's modern stormwater technology. And it's not about adding some shrubs and bushes around the parking lot. It's constantly reducing the requirement that not your body but the previous boards had introduced via zoning ordinance that said they had to have that amount of parking. Now, if that's the case, why don't we just pave the entire community and as we feel like it, we'll start developing it? So we're all grandfathered in. We should just pave the entire place over today, and then we'll start carving it off. And 20 years from now, we'll say, woo, I'm glad we did that. By the way, we're coming up on the 30-year anniversary of the groundbreaking of the Home Depot, not the 20 anniversary, we're coming up on the 30-year. So you can only imagine what the standards were 30 years ago were not what they are today. So that puts everybody surrounding there at a huge disadvantage. The developmental costs are hugely different, so it's not fair to that district. Again, that district is constantly taking people's rights away. And through the body that you're doing here, just constantly, constantly, constantly keeps reducing the other people's rights in the Corporate Overlay District. And that's the best way to describe it. So every time this guy gets up to the podium and he says, well, it's a sea of asphalt, we're tired of hearing that. Let's stick to what the rules are, and let's try to have everybody play by the rules because it seems there's always an exception to the rule. Always.
If I may, just for my adification, what rights are you talking about that are being diminished?
I just explained them to you. If they were, if somebody was to come in and apply for a building in that district, they would have to come up with the 2020 Wayne County DEQ stormwater management requirements. That project sponsor right there just admitted they had a meeting with the county, and they are going to be grandfathered in to the 1994 standards of just adding, basically reducing water, permeable surfaces. Where really, if you, if you look at it on a drawing, you're really raising the roof of the building and landscaping around it. But the key factor is you are eliminating parking. How much parking can you eliminate in the future that was required to build that massive, what is it, 300,000-square-foot building? No.
But it was, it was the understanding at that time that the parking that was being exhibited in that project was excessive and that they could afford to diminish the numbers.
Mr. Chairman, if I may reply, more importantly, I don't know if he heard it in the summary that the planner explained, we're not here tonight about a decision of carving out a parcel or reducing parking. That decision was made by playing by all the rules and dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's and going through every regulation, the township and the county and the state, back in 2017. So if he wants to go visit that issue, I'd suggest he go back and look at that meeting and have a conversation about that. We're here about this particular potential use of this site, which in fact creates capacity for stormwater management that doesn't exist today, reduces the amount of surface flowing into it. So whether he wants to talk about parking or stormwater, there's a reason we actually go with engineers with actual data on site to do the actual testing and see what really the case is going to be. And it's based on that, that as Mr. Sloan's recommendation indicates, we not only meet the standards, we are simply satisfy all the criteria for this request, and the argument about parking should have, would have been an interesting argument back in 2017. That issue's resolved.
It was. We brought that up in 2017. I spoke at the podium for that, and I said it's unfair that you let a development come in, basically over-pave, allow them to over-pave, require them to over-pave, and then you start carving it off and say they didn't need it. Now, this same scenario is happening at all Home Depots. If you go around and look at it, there's companies that approach them and say, look, you could carve these off as outlots. Some of them mostly were designed with two outlots, usually one outlot primarily. Now they're trying to get two, three, four different outlots in them. So that's not fair, is what I'm saying. It is a disadvantage to the district. You created a district there. The district has rules. Now there's exceptions again to the rules. Now, the Home Depot has been hugely exempted for everything. Outdoor storage, outdoor sales, they're selling everything, everything's piled up. Tool rental, truck rental. How many exemptions can the Home Depot get? How many? The small guy comes along, what's the small guy supposed to do?
All right, well, we, we can, we can --
No, we can. This is a decision that, wait a minute. Excuse me, I'm still talking.
But this is not a discussion for this, this agenda tonight.
It is. It is. Because you're making a decision here.
Yes, we are, but we're, you're bringing up things that have no relevance.
Well, this is what has to be brought up. These are facts. These are not lies. These are facts.
Right.
These have happened. You can go back and check the records. These incidents have happened. So when they came to reduce the parking, they reduced the parking for their own business. It wasn't talked about the outlot. The outlot was the frosting on the cake, but it was proposed to reduce their parking to take up for their expansion of business, which was counterintuitive anyways. What bill, what business expands and has less parking?
The point I'm going to make here is that we have something before us tonight as a recommending body to the trustees that we need to go through, and your points should be taken up with the trustees because if Wayne County is satisfied with what is going on and what the project sponsor has proposed, then we have no choice then but to adjudicate upon that. It's not for us to go and rewrite history and to change this and that. We have what we have before us, and if you have those concerns, I would suggest you take those before the trustees.
I disagree because it's a special land use. What does the word special mean?
Right.
That means out of the ordinary, right?
That's correct.
So it does start with you, it does start on this board.
It starts with us, exactly.
It does.
But it ends with the trustees.
But you just said it doesn't start with you. That's not true.
No, I said we can't go back and rewrite history.
But you can look at the current situation. The current situation, the facts do not lie.
Okay.
You need to make a decision on the current situation. The current situation, as I just spelled out to you, as such.
Okay.
As such, exists today.
Okay.
It's a parking lot. It is a parking lot.
Yes, it is.
That doesn't give it the rights to have special needs from the other surrounding district.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Well, perhaps a project sponsor could address this, though. When you, when you go through what you go through with the development, obviously, these other governmental entities have to be, you know, considered and consulted, and again, the i's dotted and the t's crossed. So before us tonight is really just a matter of can this, in this raw form, take place on those terms, right? We're not dealing, we're not dealing with site plans.
Correct.
We're not dealing with the exact engineering. We're not dealing with, with those issues. Those issues, should this be approved, will be dealt with, correct?
Correct, Mr. Chairman. As the plan stated, this is a conceptual site plan. It's one that we've done a lot of due diligence on, a lot of work with, and, but it's a conceptual site plan as to the particular questions as to what would happen with the amount of water, what would happens with traffic, what happens with parking and all those things. Those are very specific concerns that are addressed in detail in the site plan process. We've demonstrated, as we had to meet the criteria of the special land use application, we've demonstrated the ability to meet those and exceed those as it relates to the township requirements and the county's requirements regarding stormwater. So absolutely.
Yeah.
But there'll be greater detail to those, and if for some reason, during the detail of the engineering of the site plan, something doesn't come up the way it was conceptually believed it was going to go, it doesn't get through.
Right.
It's that simple.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Anyone else from the audience? This is added to your 90 seconds, by the way.
We've got a light agenda tonight, anyway. We have to look on how this was born. Like, like the counselor said, four years ago, the site plan for Home Depot was actually modified 25 years after it was conceived. I mean, duh, where does that happen, right? At that time, they were told that the engineering for the stormwater didn't meet today's standards. Okay? During that time period between 25 years that this has gone on, we've had other development in that area, okay? And they've kind of said, well, you know, we're using this for detention, and this is detention, and now it's shared detention. We really don't have it. I looked at the site today. That would never pass standards, okay, for Wayne County today, even at the reduced number of the parking lot. So what was said four years ago was the engineering was going to be revisited on the site, and if it needed to be, it would be improved. I don't see anything that's happened to say, yes, we've revisited the site, the engineering's to today's standards, you're granted the special land use.
We haven't, we haven't had the engineering yet, so, so we can't, we can't make that determination.
It was demanded, it was demanded. Phil Joy told them it was contingent on the engineering of the detention.
Mr. Chairman, he's just making stuff up, so we could be here all night if we wanted to just make stuff up.
We're not making stuff up. You can go to the record.
No, okay, so we don't need to battle over, over this. I think the point has been made. Sir? All right, all right, very quickly, you know, because it's unprecedented to get up more than once.
I want to correct you on what you say. When you make a decision here, it's binding. It's legally binding, so don't gloss over it that it has no merit. And I hate when you do that.
Patrick, Patrick, when we --
Excuse me, I'm still talking.
I understand that.
If it wasn't for --
But I'm trying to get, get to a point of what you're just saying right now, Patrick.
Right.
Patrick, when we, when we go through a special land use, it still goes before the trustees, does it not?
That's correct. It has to, the planning commission is...
In other words, we are not the final word here. So what we go through is not what you're making it out to be.
But you're still a binding body. You're an, you're an advisory body to the township trustees. You start the process.
Yes, we do.
Like it or not.
Yeah, we do.
If you're denying it here, it's denied, right?
That's correct.
Then there's probably an appeal process or something like that.
It doesn't have to be denied, because the trustees can, can, can still pass approval.
But what I'm saying, when you have a special land use like tonight,
Mm-hmm.
you should not gloss over it to say, "It's just a mere, it could be changed at any time." That's not true. Because it has a binding effect. It sets a legal precedence.
All right, we're not, we're not going to beat this dead horse, because, because...
Listen, I've been a citizen of this community for 44 years.
I understand.
Okay? I've seen this process many times, over and over. This panel, if you don't want to take this seriously, it should be disbanded. Because then you negate yourself on your importance.
Okay.
You're the planning commission. You're supposed to be setting the stage for the plans, right?
Absolutely.
So if you feel you don't have any merit, why be here?
It's not about merit. It's about, it's about nine people, or in this case, a few people that are going through a process of evaluating what's before us. Not the entire project, because it hasn't been approved. Not the engineering, because that's, that's yet to come. Not the site plan, not any of that, that stuff. The theory of whether or not this can go forward is what we're about tonight, and it has not been decided upon yet, from our, from our standpoint. So what you're, what you're trying to do is to stonewall us into a denial.
No.
And we have no reason at this point, unless, unless, you know, the other commissioners come up with something else too, that would, would lead us in that direction.
First of all, don't put words in my mouth. I'm not trying to stonewall anybody. I'm trying to have fair and equitable treatment of everybody in that district.
Okay.
That's what I want. I want fair and equality.
Okay.
And in today's times, that seems what everybody's yelling for. Fairness and equality.
Okay.
I want to see fairness and equality. It's not about a guy's, he's, they've got all the rights in the world to build a building. Let's set that aside. It's under what regulations they're going to be allowed to build it under.
Okay.
That's where it becomes unfair.
Yes.
If you're going to go back to 1994, Home Depot raised all the trees. That's what started the tree ordinance, was that exact site. I have the newspaper, all the trees were laying. That's what started the Canton Tree Preservation Ordinance, was that site. So if you want to go back and, and for your quote unquote, "beat the dead horse," well, maybe a lot of horses should have been reevaluated in this community before they went forward. And I'm going to close on this. In a lot of communities, they're actually doing the process backwards. They're having them do all the engineering before they go in front of the planning commissions. This way, they know it's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Anyone else from the audience?
Mr. Chairman moved to close the public hearing.
Support.
Got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'm going to go to the commission. Commissioner Charia.
I have a couple of questions. Patrick, you mentioned about the COPD, COPD would deny a fast food restaurant in this particular site. And if that is the case, how would we distinguish between a standard restaurant and a fast food restaurant when there's going to be a pickup window that might be very similar to a fast food restaurant? So, how do we make a distinction?
That, that's a very good question. And there are no black and white standards in the zoning ordinance by which we can evaluate those types of criteria. And so what we would have to do is evaluate the pickup window as an accessory use. The corporate park overlay district, it doesn't allow for drive-through restaurants, but it does allow for accessory uses and structures. And so what's proposed here is for the pickup window to be an accessory use to a standard restaurant with, with typical seating, where it functions more of an accessory. And to make that evaluation, it would have to be done on a case-by-case basis, based on the business model of whoever's proposing to come in and the types of volumes they get walking through the door versus going through the drive-through. And that's something we would, we won't really have a, a chart or anything of, of scoring it or anything like that, but it's more of looking at other similar uses in the region or in the nation to see if that would function as an accessory pickup window for that particular use.
So the distinction between a pickup window and a drive-through window is the, the pickup window has no avenue to actually create an order from without, from, at the building. In other words, there's no, there's no ordering panel, there's no speakers, no, nothing like that. They have already made their order, they're coming to this restaurant to just pick it up. Is that, is that, am I understanding that correctly? Whereas with a drive-through, you can drive up and create your order and pick it up. Is that what, is that what we're saying? And that the fast food could only fall under the, the drive-through arena, not, not the one where you, you just pick it up?
Well, that was one of the comments that we had on the proposal, because I'll, I'll zoom in here, south of the building. They do show an area to place a menu board, where somebody could place an order. And that was one of the areas we were concerned about in terms of allowing for a use to function more as a drive-through. However, when the Starbucks was approved, I believe that they were approved for a menu board. And the building to the west at Aspen Dental, I don't think that they are prohibited from a menu board. I would have to go back through those approvals to see if there was any prohibition on, on a menu board. So, whether someone orders from a board would not be one of the major criteria we would look at in this case. And that's based on some previous approvals that have been done.
Okay, because I was, I was confused when, when looking at the packet. Commissioner, or, Mr. Ayman, did you have something you want to say to that?
I was just going to add the explanation to that. Patrick, the planner is correct in terms of it's going to require an assessment. Typically, in response to the other planning commission question, you're going to look at the nature of a user. Do they have a sit-down thing? What's the percentage of use that they're doing versus, you know, drive-through? And even nowadays, though, that's where, and he's right, the, the site where the old Hayden's restaurant was actually has the approval for a drive-through ordering window for a standard type restaurant use, but not a fast food restaurant. And so, the township's been approached by, approached by a couple potential users and they're clearly a, a fast food type of setup, based on the nature of the food and whatever else like that. And they were told, "No, you, that's not what you're approved for." So the township uses it essentially as we've acknowledged in the, in, as we acknowledged in my comments tonight and by putting the specific notation on the plans, that essentially only standard type restaurants are the kinds that can do it. And as we've seen, particularly with COVID, that you had some restaurants, even, you, we've had existing restaurants that didn't have any pickup window or, or drive-through order capacity. And the ones who were fortunate, could, on the one side of the building, could take you order, then get it to you on the other side of the building, you know, as we're trying to accommodate them. But, so, in this instance, in fact, we would be just like the place next door and, and also like the Starbucks. And so, if it's a standard restaurant, you're going to know it by the nature and the amount of work it does inside with the seats, with the tables, and the nature of its product. And so, and that's why we've also, we stipulate and acknowledge to that restriction as well as part of the approval.
Okay. So Commissioner Charia, did that?
Yeah, so, to my understanding, a fast food restaurant would be something where you order and then in a couple of minutes, maybe 10 minutes or five to 10 minutes, you, you get food. It seems to me that, you know, this might be something like that, because if you, if you can come and order and then just pick your food through the drive-through, it might just be a, you know, way to get around the, the fast food restriction. The other question that I had was, you know, when we look at special land use review standards, you mentioned several of the points that, you know, we comply with over here. Is there anything that stands out and that you feel that, you know, this, this might not be the case for a special land use, based on, you know, your understanding of this plan?
I think the only thing that would, that would make me question some of the standards is whether that eastern tenant would function more like a drive-through or a bona fide pickup window. And the reason I bring that up is a typical drive-through, it has a long stacking lane, sometimes it's 10 spaces or more. And depending on the time of day, like morning for a coffee shop or evening for, you know, a hamburger place, something like that, those can stack up pretty far and block parking. In some cases, they can block adjacent drives. And so, if this were to function more like a drive-through and we would have stacking back up and it would hurt the circulation of the site, if, if there was a use that would do that, I would say that it's something that would be inconsistent with, with the area, just because the stacking of cars for a, a long way indicates a drive-through, which is not permitted in the area. If it were, then we would be applying the regular drive-through standards to make sure there was plenty of car, plenty of room to get the cars out of the driving aisles and into a dedicated stacking lane. Besides the potential impact of what a drive-through use could be in terms of numbers of cars, it, the proposed development and proposed uses are otherwise compatible with the district in terms of retail, food service, and other service establishments.
Okay, thank you. Let's hold.
Commissioner Graham Hudek.
Thank you. Okay, so, starting off, I don't believe that people are clamoring for drive-throughs everywhere. I mean, can you hear me? Sorry. We have a pandemic right now, but it's not going to last forever. I think what we're looking for more with restaurants is people eating outside. You see Plymouth, you, you go to different restaurants where there is outdoor seating and that's where people are clamoring. The pandemic will supposedly end when the vaccination is here, so to plan a whole structure around a pandemic and just drive-throughs, I think, I, I just don't like that Ford Road would be all drive-throughs. I don't think that's what we want. And that's what that special land use says to me. Another thing, in terms of daycare centers, I've had children that I've, you know, worked and gone to put them in daycare and I would not want them in the middle of a parking lot. There is no place for them to play. I did see like, there's like a 110-foot square foot thing on the top left there in this drawing and maybe 349 square foot there. I'm assuming that's for the restaurants, but you, if you're going to have a daycare center, you need an outdoor area. We're looking for more outdoor areas, in my opinion, not more places to drive cars through. And, and by putting cars in that area, I think it becomes a drive-through, in my opinion. And also, it also has a, I think that's a dangerous area too, by separating those and having cars drive through the middle of them. It just creates more chaos, I think, in terms of traffic and, and safety. Patrick, what is your opinion, though, on the detention ponds? I'm going to ask you, based on your experience.
Based on how we, how we evaluate these, when, before a plan or a special land use or any plan comes to the planning commission, it's reviewed by our development review committee. Our development review committee consists of the planning division, the engineering division, the building and inspections division, and the fire department. And depending on what plan is submitted, it depends on what kind of review is done. So for example, with a special land use, sometimes the engineering division will give preliminary comments in terms of things to look at, or if there's anything design-related that they may see could affect the site plan, they'll note that. But the engineering division also understands that the special land use is just the first part of something and that if it doesn't look at engineering at this point, it's not as big a deal, because they know that special land uses ultimately require site plans. And when the site plan comes in, that's when it's engineered. And that's when they really look at the details in terms of water, sewer, storm water, and other types of facilities under their purview. And also, in the zoning ordinance, when somebody submits a special land use, they have to meet the submittal requirements of the ordinance. And for special land uses, the zoning ordinance requires a preliminary site plan that does not have to have the engineering. It can have similar details that we see in tonight's packet. Because if somebody gets special land use approval, that gives them the go-ahead to go and do their engineering and to do more feasibility, which is more costly, which is a lot more paper, a lot more labor-intensive. And that's why that if somebody gets a special land use, the zoning ordinance gives them 12 months to submit a site plan. If they can't submit their site plan within 12 months of getting special land use approval, their special land use approval expires and they have to go back to the very beginning. Also, if they get special land use approval and they get site plan approval, they have 18 months to commence construction. If they can't commence construction within that timeframe, their approvals for special land use and site plan expire. So along the way, there's more information required and it's all time-sensitive, so if they take too long, those approvals do lapse.
Well, thanks. I mean, I understand you explained the process, but have you gotten any indications from our engineering group on this site at all, in terms of history and what you might, what your options might be?
I don't believe that we have. And I think, once they get to the point of site plan review, I think there will be a couple options. The first is they'll look at the feasibility of the existing area where they drain, which is the storm pond. And they'll see if the storm pond meets the standards based on what they're proposing. If it does, then I think the county would, would probably approve it. If it doesn't, then their options would be to either approve the pond to allow for the drainage according to what the county requires, or they could do some other system like an underground detention system. Sometimes we see site plans come through here where they do an underground detention or retention system. It's, it's not cheap and it's not always easy, but sometimes without a place to put a pond, it's the only option. So that's something that engineering, as well as the county, will evaluate during the site plan review process.
Okay. Then I guess I would just stand with what I had said before, where I would not want to base a decision based on the pandemic that we have now for a building that might be there 30 years. I don't think that we should design around that or have special use and, around that. I don't agree with more drive-throughs. I think we need to look for more outdoor areas, shared space seating, and, you know, for childcare, if you're going to have childcare there, you need it, you do require an outdoor area. So, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Commissioner Zubor?
My, my understanding is...
Microphone on?
Uh, yes. I think I'm just not close enough. Thank you.
Okay.
My understanding is that, that, that these special land, is it that we're approving, when we approve a special land use, we're approving that it could be these things, not necessarily that it will be these things.
Correct.
So we're, we're approving a laundry list of potential uses, but it's not saying that it's going to be a carryout restaurant or it's going to be a childcare center. That I assume that if there's a childcare center that would go in here, it would need to comply with all of the childcare center requirements and not just because we said special land use, they don't have to do anything else.
More, more specifically, as Mr., as the planner pointed out, the uses that you see that are actually listed on the plans and in the specifics, those are uses that are in the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
And so, the only approval we're seeking here is the potential to have those windows, depending on which uses. If in fact, we were to have a, a daycare center here, this plan you see as a conceptual plan would obviously go away. You'd have to have all kinds of changes with play areas and those kinds of things. Or if we came with a restaurant that wanted to have outdoor seating and not that, then we'd come in with that plan. This is simply an entitlement as it relates to, of the uses that are already allowed by ordinance. If we have those uses and we add this, this pickup window option to it, whether that's the only question, whether we add the window to it. And it's strictly a conceptual question at this point. It's allowing us an entitlement to go look, to see, and then to come back and demonstrate whatever it is. I don't know many daycare places that would care about having a window. I don't think they're going to throw the kids at you as you drive by. So, so, so obviously, whether there ever ends up a window on this site or not will be dependent ultimately on who the developer is able to attract as a client and for a use that is consistent with your already permitted uses on the ordinance, as Mr. Sloan pointed out, that are listed in there.
Okay. Thank you. I, I have no other questions or, or comments. I think this is fine.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Um, the issue that I have with this, uh, proposal tonight is basically trying to cram too much into a small space. Yes, okay, granted, there are a list of approved uses, but that doesn't mean that we have to have, you know, a whole bunch of them or all of them in one small area. These uses, as I see here, all involve a circulation of vehicular traffic that I see as a nightmare for such a small area. Um, and, and just, and I understand this is a schematic, and, and the flow of this right now is just, to me, atrocious. I see, I see jam-ups on Ford Road, potentially. I see, uh, total inconvenience of customers having to come in and go to, to one entrance to the site, and then having to drive all the way around the buildings to get to the, uh, the line, if you will, to get into the drive-through. All of which creating, uh, conflict and confusion, uh, within the site. I just think we're trying to do too much with such a small parcel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I want to point out that what you see before you is again a conceptual plan. And number one, part of that conceptual plan demonstrates there's no request at any point to have any kind of curb cut on Ford Road. It'll be using the existing drives off of Ford Road. Secondly, whether you end up with the, anywhere near this amount of square footage, based on, is going to be dependent upon when they come back to the Planning Commission for an actual plan for actual uses, uh, to, to actually build something. This does not create a preliminary site plan entitlement of, of any kind of size of anything in that regard. So this is just representative. And typically, when we're showing it in a conceptual basis, yeah, I've always encouraged clients to show, listen, I want you to show a, a building that meets setbacks, meets the landscaping, we have to show that we can meet all the basic requirements. What actually ends up, based on what you're going to see in a site plan, is going to be, and reviewed by you, is, is that too much? Is it, if this kind of use, that kind of use, does it flow and whatever? Does, does the traffic circulation work? Does the parking work? Does the staging work? All those things. And so, literally, all you're seeing, although there are representative things on here, there's strictly that. There's no entitlement included in any of that. It's just strictly a representation of what could be there. What will be there will be determined by this Planning Commission based on an actual review of the site plan.
Okay, so, what we're, what we're about is approval or disapproval of a concept of having businesses in there, but not necessarily these businesses and not necessarily in this orientation.
Exactly. The, you're about, the, the request we're seeking is special land use approval, which would entitle the usage of windows in two of the businesses in that. That's all we're about tonight. The size of the businesses, the actual uses of the businesses, all the rest of that stuff, the flow, the parking, all those other things, that's going to come back to you in the usual level of detail and depiction that you're going to see as part of a site plan approval process.
Okay, all right. That's, that's a little bit better understanding, because I, to me, this is a mess. I mean, it's a hot mess.
Yeah, and, and in fairness, Mr. Chairman, we, I, I try to show it worst-case scenario, because it's only going to get better from there, quite frankly. This is, you know, but, but this doesn't create any entitlement for anyone to go out and start engineering on any kind of plan or anything like that at all.
Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Eganberger?
Yes, thank you. Um, I appreciate all the questions everyone has asked. I think that's been very helpful. I also have the concerns that everyone else has raised, and I hope that, that will be shared with the, uh, client when they're putting something together. I think more outdoor space would be great for people to eat at. I think it's a lot jammed in there. Two drive-up places seems crazy in one spot. I understand you're going with the worst-case scenario, but certainly I hope to see something that looks more reasonable, um, in the, in the end. So I appreciate all the conversation and, and what we've been able to hear about this. It's been helpful to understand what all will be happening.
All right. Any, any further comments? Yes, Commissioner Graham Hudek.
So, just for clarification then, I mean, I reread the first paragraph, and it, so we're basically basing this on approving special land use with two drive-throughs, two windows for a drive-through.
Pickup.
Pickup. Yes, that, that is the request, and, um, one thing I do want to note is that the, the zoning ordinance refers to the plan associated with the special land use as a preliminary site plan. And so, in evaluating a special land use, that preliminary site plan needs to show a feasible layout of what would likely eventually be proposed at the final site plan, or at the next stage, which would be site plan review. And in approving a special land use plan, that's essentially giving an applicant authorization to go ahead with a final site plan based on that layout, unless there's any changes that, that the Planning Commission or the Township Board requires before a revised plan comes with the special land use. So, if this layout is right, if, if the special land use is recommended, uh, for approval as is, and if the board were to approve the special land use as is, then that would be an authorization for an applicant to prepare a site plan based on this layout. So if there's anything about the proposed layout in the special land use plan that you want to see changed, uh, specifically, now would be the time to ask for those details on revised plans.
Well, what you're, what you're suggesting then is that we redesign the site, which is not what our function is. I, I, I fail to understand, which was the questioning that I went to the project sponsor. We're going to approve or disapprove a concept, then, then that may be totally changed. I mean, we could end up with a, a, a medical building instead with, with, um, pickup of pharmacies, pharmaceuticals. Okay, that's one thing. But to say, okay, if we approve this, we're actually approving the conceptual site plan, I'm not in agreement with that, because I think this is, this is, it's a terrible plan right now.
What, what Mr. Sloan explained earlier is although this is a conceptual, and it creates that level of, of essentially preliminary entitlement, when we come back and we have identified a nature of a use in a particular area, that's when you will then bring to bear the specific calculations as it relates to the flow, the traffic, the parking spaces, and all those elements. And that's where we get into the question of whether the site will work or not. And so, th- those details will be answered, whether the configuration of the one driveway will interfere with the others and all those types of things. And you'll base that on the particular, the nature of use. You're right. If, for example, it becomes a, a pharmaceutical use and it's a pickup something, then it's going to dramatically reduce and, and address that issue. But we won't know until we have the nature of the uses, and we won't know the nature of the uses until we can know whether or not we're actually going to have a window or not.
Okay, I understand that, but I don't want, I don't want to pass approval of the, of the, the conceptual plan as presented tonight. To me, I don't, if it could be separated, I would do so, I, quite honestly.
You're comfortable with one window versus two, or is that what you're saying?
I don't want to, I don't want to redesign this. That's not our function here. What I'm saying is that I can approve the idea of these businesses coming in there. I just can't approve what, what I see in terms of their orientation to one another and the site, and Ford Road, um, in, in, in this instance. I just, uh, to me, it's, and, and to say, well, if our approval then gives a modified approval of that site plan, then I can't do that. That, that's what I'm saying. I'm just saying that I-
Mr. Chairman, I would point out, I guess the one, one response I have is that, in order to get to tonight's meeting, we had to be able to demonstrate that if in fact the site were configured this way, with these sizes of uses and natures of the listener, that it in fact would comply pursuant to the township's ordinances, what, as to all those elements, that we, we have the ability to comply with those elements. And that's essentially where the township's authority starts and stops. Our written, your written ordinances require a certain amount of parking spaces, a certain amount of driveline width, a certain amount of flow, and those kinds of things. And he's, and that, and we've demonstrated with this plan the ability to meet those if we were to go forward with those, yet with the, the need to then specify with more particular design based on what we actually show up with in the site plan. So, it's, it's only essentially a, it's, it's, it's a fairly superficial entitlement, because we, we don't get with to go to there until we actually come back and demonstrate. But, but the entitlement that we do show is that we do meet all township ordinance requirements based on all the considerations that we're brought to bear in that process, by engineering, by traffic, by public safety, by buildings, by everybody.
Okay, and so can, the, the word conceptual means this is basically a, a, a gloss over of what, what it could look like, but not necessarily what it will, will look like, correct?
Correct. I, it, it's possible we could be back, theoretically, we may have to come back. If, for example, one user decides to say, show up and want to take, take the site for one particular kind of use that fits within the ordinance, then we're going to be back with you and saying, okay, obviously, that conceptual plan's out the door, because this user has, wants, wants to make the physical usage of the space this way, and whatever, and we have to, have to see how that matches up against the criteria that we were given approval on. And if we can't satisfy those criteria, then obviously it's out the door.
So we're not approving any of this plan? Is that what I'm, that is? Patrick, are we approving this plan as we, as we see it? It's a conceptual plan. Are we approving it?
Um, a- as a conceptual preliminary plan that's, that goes with the special land use, you are in the sense that a plan is required with the special land use. But ultimately, a, a site plan has to, has to, uh, be submitted before it can be approved and, and built on.
Can a site plan deviate from the conceptual plan?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right. Any, uh, any further comments, questions, from the commission?
Yeah, Chairman Green, my concern is that if the, you know, if the corporate CPOD does not permit, uh, you know, a fast-food restaurant, and, you know, this seems like a workaround to, a fast-food restaurant with two pickup windows on either side. So conceptually, I, you know, I think, why should we create the worst-case scenario? Why don't we have something better to look at? Because once we have approved a conceptual plan based on a worst-case scenario, there's a good chance that, you know, maybe-
That we will get it.
Fifty percent of us say, yeah, we might get it. So, we can, you know, this body has a special, has got a meaning, and we have to look at whether it really fits into the, the plan, corporate plan. If we don't, if you're not comfortable, you know, we, we should let them know.
Okay, so what are you proposing?
I propose, I propose that, you know, we, we, we can approve it without the pickup windows.
The request before you is about, specifically and only about the use of the windows. And, and I'm going to point out, I know Planning Commissioner is new to this planning commission. In my presentation earlier, I pointed out that this item, as presented in Word and Plan, in every detail, is identical to the approval, approved plans to the parcel to the west of here, and the parcel kitty-corner here from the Starbucks. So there is a legal precedent as it relates to the criteria, the application of the criteria by this planning commission to these plans. And while I know you have a particular concern about a look or a feel, or certain issues as to flow and, and things that would be addressed in site plan, the fact is, the question tonight is, do we meet the criteria that are written in the ordinance based on the township's past practice of applying those criteria? And we are lockstep with the last approval from here a year ago, and lockstep with the approval given at the Starbucks. So I encourage you to be consistent with the past entitlements given on projects based on the township's PAC's behavior.
And those approvals, if I recall correctly, only engaged one pickup window?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. They were smaller sites. This site was created by a split from the town, pending split of the township based on the Home Depot thing. But those are smaller parcels and much different, uh, than that. So that's right. Every site's different, and this one has its own unique layout, so.
Yeah.
So Patrick, can we, can we then, uh, approve this based upon one window?
Um, you could.
Because there's a precedent set?
You would have to specify in the motion that there would be only one pickup window, or one accessory pickup window allowed for the site. You would have to specify that in the motion, so that would carry forward.
Okay, what does the commission feel about that?
Why don't I make a motion and we find out?
Well, what do you think? I mean, any discussion or found, Drew?
We can do it as long as it, it doesn't turn out to be a fast-food restaurant.
Can you specify that? Can that be specified?
It's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance.
It's already specified.
So if it's one window, it's already in the ordinance, it can't be a fast-food.
Right.
Because I know CVS does use pickup windows for pharmaceuticals.
Right.
Yeah, so a drive-through restaurant is, um, a restaurant whose method of operation is delivering the prepared food to the customer in a motor vehicle, typically through a drive-through window for consumption off of the premises. So, a, a use that's predominantly a drive-through use is certainly not permitted in the Corporate Park overlay district. But it's a matter of that being accessory to the primary use, where most people are going to go and order the food and sit down and, and eat at the restaurant. And that accessory pickup window may be for someone who calls DoorDash or Uber Eats that would otherwise go to the restaurant, but wants that delivered to them. Um, or a restaurant that predominantly does sit-down service, but also allows a carryout window, uh, for customers. So, um, that's something that would have to be evaluated based on the specific tenant and the user. Unless there were criteria put into a motion, although I don't know what kinds of tangible criteria we could use, uh, that would stick with the property and have to apply in the future.
So it's a matter of terminology that, that we would use in the motion that would limit the, the, the usage of the, the pickup window and the establishment that was using the pickup window. In other words, that's what you're trying to say, is that we would have to, to tighten that up?
Um, you could. I'm not sure what, what type of language would really tighten it up, because if we're dealing with certain numbers-
Mr. Chairman, we've already stipulated on, on the plans that a drive-through restaurant, a, what he just described, a restaurant that the food is given through a window, then eaten off premises, we've stipulated that's not listed as a permitted potential tenant on the plan, that's, on the site plan. It's just not allowed. And we've stipulated here that that's not allowed either. Uh, this is a restaurant that's, a, a standard restaurant where predominantly the food's inside, people sit inside, eat or sit outside and eat whatever onsite. And this is a window that just facilitates some people who will actually pull up and get food. So we, you, your lang, you shouldn't have to come up with language. We've stipulated to it. It's on the plan. It's in the request, and it's covered.
Okay. All right. Somebody want to write a motion?
Sure. Um, I move to recommend approval of the special land uses for a single building and a multi-tenant building with one pickup window between them, between the two buildings. Um, not literally between them, but one shared. On part of parcel zero four nine dash nine nine dash zero 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 one dash seven one eight, illustrated on the plans, which could include a carryout restaurant, which is in section, I'm going to just not read all the section numbers. We're going to-
Thank you.
I hope that's okay. Uh, a carryout restaurant, a standard restaurant with accessory pickup window, a medical dental clinic, financial institution, business service establishments, childcare center, general retail, office building, training slash educational apparel, bookstore, stationary shop, convenience grocery, drugstore, barber shop hair slash styling salon, uh, clothing alteration slash shoe repair, and personal fitness slash health centers. The request meets the special, the special land use criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided, subject to specific design criteria to be determined at the time of site plan review.
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by, uh, Commissioner Zuber and support by
I didn't.
Commissioner Eganberger, uh, for discussion. Does this motion, Patrick, then free up design of the site, site plan? Because the site plan shows two, two windows, and that's what our discussion has been, right? And so, I don't want to walk out of here tonight thinking that we approved one thing and we're actually getting that.
Right. I think the way that the motion is, is stated, uh, what's on the plan is clearly not, uh, something that would be accepted on a site plan to be submitted later. They would have to redesign the proposed layout plan based on the motion.
Okay, so, does that have to be stated in addition to her motion?
I think it is in the motion based on, um-
I didn't, I didn't see it there. That's why-
Mr. Chairman, we acknowledge, we acknowledge your question.
She, she did it.
Yeah. We, we acknowledge that it would be restricted to one window and, as the motion is written, and if, and if it were voted on, it would only be one, not two. We, for the record, we would acknowledge that, so I can hopefully assuage your concern about that.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and, uh, the support. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Eganberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Okay, so this goes forward, and then the trustees get to, to hash this out, uh, as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our second agenda item of the night, SING Development, where we're considering a future land use. It's actually a, a map amendment, and I'm, I, the way I'm understanding this, Patrick, is that we are, um, we're going to actually propose an amendment, or a propose setting up an amendment? Which, which, what are we doing tonight? Are we actually proposing the amendment?
Um, the, there's a request by, uh, two applicants this evening, and, and the present applicant. Their request to the Planning Commission is for the Planning Commission to initiate the amendment process for the future land use map. And by initiating the process, it doesn't mean that the Planning Commission will ultimately approve an amendment. It just means that the Planning Commission has enough to start the process of the initiating. And then, at the very end of the process, where there's review by the Township Board, there's review by surrounding municipalities- there's review by surrounding municipalities, and there's a public hearing. Before, as those three things happen, at the end of the process, only after those things happen, will the planning commission decide an up or down vote on a proposed amendment to the future land use map. But that entire process starts with what we're reviewing tonight at this meeting for whether or not to initiate that amendment process to the plan.
To this one, okay. So, and this property is located east of Ridge, north and north of Ford Road. You want to give us some more detail, Patrick, on that?
Sure. The applicant proposes to classify three parcels and they are the northern three parcels in the outline map that's on the screen here. To classify those northern three parcels from very low-density residential, which is one dwelling unit per acre, to low-density residential, two units per acre on the far east side of those parcels. And also to classify most of the western side as medium-high-density residential, which is eight dwelling units per acre. And this is illustrated on a plan from the applicant that we'll scroll to in a little bit. The next part of the request is to reclassify the southernmost parcel. It includes the current Park West apartments and a little peninsula that goes out and includes some land to the east. The request is to classify that southern parcel from very low-density residential at one dwelling unit per acre to medium-high-density residential at eight units per acre. The purpose of the proposed future land use map amendment application is to eventually construct 144 apartment units north of Park West and 10 detached, single-family residential units west of Fellows Creek Estates per the conceptual plans that have been submitted. However, the proposal is conceptual and could change based on available zoning districts. The planning and zoning law in the state of Michigan provides that the government has a legitimate interest in maintaining compatibility of surrounding areas, protecting and preserving natural resources, and ensuring adequate infrastructure such as roads, water supply, and sanitary sewer. Adoption of a master plan and imposition of zoning restrictions to accomplish those interests as well as to avoid overcrowding, preserve open space, and protect the aesthetics of an area of land are consistent with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act and the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. When we look at whether to initiate an amendment to the future land use map for the site, one of the first things that we look at is the surrounding area and how it's classified. The existing land uses on the northern three parcels are single-family residential. All three parcels have single-family homes on them. And the southern parcel has Park West, which is a multifamily development. So all parcels within the request are occupied and have continued to operate in accordance with their approved zoning. The existing zoning for the northern three parcels is rural residential and the southern parcel is zoned RA, rural agricultural. But the southern parcel has a consent judgment that allowed for the development of Park West. So even though Park West Apartments is not planned for apartments on the future land use map, and it's not zoned based on the rural agricultural zoning, the consent judgment that runs with the property allows for the legal use of Park West Apartments as it exists and allows for the continued use of Park West Apartments. So the consent judgment basically covers the zoning for that site. As we see on the future land use map, in the yellow area, that's the very low-density residential that encompasses the site. Most of the north is also the same classification of one dwelling unit per acre and then some of the property to the south as well. To the west, on the west side of Ridge Road, is the location of Patriot Park, which is classified as community facilities. And to the east, it's classified as low-density residential at two units per acre. So as we look at this area of the township, it's mostly rural, rural character, mostly one dwelling unit per acre, a natural park across Ridge Road, and some single-family residential at a higher density to the east. The Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires that the planning commission review its master plan at least every five years to determine whether to amend the plan or to adopt a new plan. At the time of the adoption of the current plan in 2017, the plan met all the general purposes of the act to guide and accomplish within the township development that satisfies the criteria. Before a formal five-year review of a plan, there are two ways that an amendment to a plan can be initiated. The first is that the planning commission may initiate an amendment to any part of the plan pursuant to the act. That includes the future land use map as well as any policy that's in the plan. The second way that Canton Township allows the plan to be amended is it allows an owner or an owner's agent to file a future land use amendment application for consideration by the township. Because the application before the planning commission is initiated by an owner's agent, our review of the application is limited to the future land use map and how the proposed future land use amendment complies with the existing policies of the plan. Our review of the application is based on accepted planning principles provided in state law regarding community master plans and also the township's adopted comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance as well as the observation of the site and the township's ability to serve the site with roads and utilities. And to amend the future land use map of the plan, our review determines whether conditions or township priorities have changed to the extent that an amendment to the map is necessary. Based on reviewing the, the state law and planning practices, we've consolidated the review to five criteria to evaluate in terms of whether to recommend, whether to not, to initiate an amendment to the plan. The first is we look at the existing policies of the comprehensive plan. The application that the township offers to an applicant is not a comprehensive plan amendment. It's a future land use map amendment. Therefore, an applicant can apply to amend the future land use map, but nowhere in that application does it allow an owner to apply to, to amend the policies of the plan. Therefore, we have to review this map amendment based on the existing plan policies and assume that there will be no policy changes as we look at the map amendment. So what we do is we look at the existing policies to see if this proposed map amendment is in line with those policies. And at the bottom of page three of our review letter, we go through a number of policies for the western part of the township as well as the very low-density residential land use designation. And the very low-density residential land use designation is reserved for large lot residential located in either platted subs or individual meets and bounds lots. And it's based on a large amount of the surrounding area. So the current very low-density residential classification is consistent with some of the surrounding area and the rural priorities of the master plan in this part of the township. One of the next items is that in Objective 3.3, the township shall strive to maintain the rural atmosphere of the western portion of the community through use of creative land development regulations and cooperative development, plan review, and monitoring. And then there's another priority for rural character strategies on page 44 of the plan that the township evaluates its zoning regulations to ensure the development standards allow for flexibility and control, to ensure that development proposed in the western portions of the community is compatible with existing development and maintain the character of that area. In our conclusion, based on the above policies of the area and the western part of the township, the proposed future land use map amendment application to reclassify the subject parcels from very low-density to medium-high-density and low-density residential is not supported by the existing policies in the plan. The second criteria that we look at is the adjacency and the proximity of the same or similar future land use classifications. The nearest site classified as medium-high-density residential, which is eight units per acre, based on the future land use map, is located about one and a half miles away at the northwest corner of Salts and Canton Center Road. Therefore, a medium-high-density residential future land use classification for the subject site would be inconsistent with the future land use classes in the surrounding area. And even though changing the future land use class of the existing Park West apartment site to medium-high-density residential would make it more consistent with its current use, doing so is not necessary at this time because changing the future land use class would not affect the existing consent judgment or the approved Park West apartment development. The third criteria that we look at is the feasibility of existing future land use classifications and zoning regulations for the site development. As we previously stated, all four of the parcels are currently being used. The northern three parcels are used for single-family residential and the southern parcel is being used for multifamily residential pursuant to the approved consent judgment. Therefore, the existing future land use classification is feasible for site development on this location. The fourth criteria that we look at is whether a future land use map amendment is local in scope or regional in scope. If something is local in scope, we can get local participation at the public hearing about what, what neighbors feel about the site. But when something is regional in scope, that requires a much larger evaluation of township priorities, township infrastructure, and township land uses either in this region of the township or as the township, in the township as a whole. As we previously noted, the nearest area that's classified as medium-high-density residential on the future land use map is about one and a half miles away at Canton Center and Salts Road. Therefore, consider, considering this high-density type of classification for the site would require a more regional evaluation of the housing market and demand in the northwest quadrant of Canton Township, including public participation from the region's residents. This type of, this type of an evaluation is far beyond the scope of a future land use amendment application as it requires an evaluation of the township's comprehensive plan policies, which are reserved for a township-initiated review of the comprehensive plan. It's also worth noting that there are existing development, developments of multifamily in Cherry Hill Village, which is about one mile south of the subject area. The final criteria that we look at is the impact on utilities, roads, and other infrastructure. The first part of the utilities is looking at the sewer. The comprehensive plan recognizes a synchronous relationship between the township sewer master plan and the comprehensive future land use plan. Therefore, the sewer master plan was prepared to identify sanitary sewer improvements required to meet the ultimate demand according to the density and future land use recommendations set forth in the comprehensive plan. The application materials submitted with this future land use map amendment application acknowledge existing sewer capacity limits for the subject site. According to the township's engineering division, the subject site does not have the available, available sewer capacity to service the uses that would be permitted under the proposed future land use map amendment. Although the application materials propose that the township board and trustees transfer additional sewer capacity from Patriot Park to the applicant's site, it is unknown whether the township has excess sewer capacity on the Patriot Park site, whether the township board would consider an offer to transfer sewer capacity off-site, and where additional sewer capacity should be allocated if such additional capacity exists. Therefore, this is, this requires a broad evaluation from the township for those questions. And a lot of the answers to those questions would come in the form of policy from the township board, not something that comes from the planning commission. Therefore, because it's not a function of the planning commission during this course of the review, we review it based on the sewer capacity as it exists today in those township plans that are adopted. The final item that we look at under the impact on utilities and roads is the traffic impact. There's not a traffic impact study required with a future land use application. So what we do is we use available traffic study data for developments nearby that have come through the township planning department in the last couple of years. And the township recently did receive an application for a private school east of Canton Charter Academy, which did include a traffic study of the area. And it indicated levels of service at the intersections of Ford Road and Beck Road and Ford Road and Ridge Road that were either a failing, which is a level of service F, or approaching capacity, which is a level of service E during the peak hours in the AM and PM. And a higher-density residential future land use map class would likely result in additional vehicle trips during those peak hours when the current future land use map than the current future land use class on the subject site. While the applicant proposes a dedicated drive from Ridge Road for Canton Charter Academy, there's no indication that this will improve or sustain the current level of service at Ford Road and Beck Road and Ford Road and Ridge Road. Therefore, we do not recommend proceeding with the proposed future land use map amendment application due to some of the road deficiencies that we know exist in the area. And so in summary, based on the above criteria, the future land use map amendment application as a whole is inconsistent with the surrounding areas and the policies of the comprehensive plan. Additionally, there's no evidence to indicate that the subject parcels cannot be feasibly used under the provisions of the current future land use map of the plan. And finally, the proposed application would require a regional review of the future land use map and require further study of the impact of the sewer system and traffic levels of service, all of which are well beyond the scope of the future land use map application. Therefore, our recommendation is to deny the application to prepare an amendment to the comprehensive plan, future land use map, to reclassify the parcels as noted. And that concludes our report. And again, a denial of the application would simply be a denial to initiate an amendment to the master plan to consider this request even further. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is there, it looks like there's someone from the project that would like to speak? Yes, sir? Go ahead.
Yes, good evening. My name is Mike Knowles. I'm with the Umlaur Group, 49287 Wickstum Road, representing SING Development tonight. It's nice to see you all again. It's, it's been a little while. I've been before you many times, but it's nice to actually go to a planning commission meeting in, in person. I've been doing so many Zoom meetings that it's, it's nice to get out in this beautiful theater. I appreciate Mr. Sloan's review and I understand the constraints that he has to review these. I want to bring a couple of things to your attention. While I do, do respect his thorough review, I don't necessarily agree with his, his recommendations. It's my unpleasant duty tonight to come before you with a recommendation for denial, which is never a good place to start. But I'd like to talk to you about how we got there and a little bit about the analysis. So we're inconsistent. Our application to consider the future land use map amendment is inconsistent with the future land use map, essentially. The, that's what we intend to amend. And as Mr. Sloan pointed out, the RA designation on the existing Park West Apartments with 200 completely built and 60% leased apartments is, is really not a good comparison. To say that this is a regional matter because there are no apartments but for a mile or a mile and a half away is, is incorrect. The, there are 203 apartments adjacent to the three parcels that we look to develop. In addition, it's also consistent with the Fellow Creek Estates parcel directly to the east as low-density residential. Mr. Sloan mentioned he was going to scroll through some slides and there's a, a nice slide that shows in our application exactly what I'm talking about. Yeah, there you go. That's a good one there. Up, up one, up one slide, please. Thank you. So you can see the section that's directly adjacent to the Fellows Creek Estates is planned to be exactly the same as the Fellows Creek Estates. Two dwelling units per acre. Right below that peach-shaped. Right below that peach-shaped area is a conservation easement. We're planning to put a conservation easement over the Fellow Creek Tributaries that run through the property so that that will be exactly consistent with the property just below it. The lightest shade of red in the lower left-hand corner is the existing Park West Apartments. What we're proposing on that western side of this property is exactly the same units, 150 units versus the 203 units on that piece of property, so a little bit smaller in scope. And what Mr. Sloan's report says is that, don't look at that because it's a consent judgment. That's one of the reasons that we're amending the future land use map, is to have the future land use map show what the actual use is there. So you don't need to do it, you don't have to do it. But the reason that Mr. Goulet asked if we wanted to include that property in our request was because that existing use is inconsistent with the future land use map. So by comparing our proposal, actually, our request to consider a proposal, by saying that there are no apartments but for a mile and a half away just isn't accurate. One of the criteria asks you to observe the existing conditions surrounding the property, and we have exactly the same conditions as the property to the south, as the property to the east, and as the property to the west because that property where Patriot Park is could be the beneficiary of the benefits of transferring the sewer. So let me back up. In the last part of Mr. Sloan's review, he indicated that the applicant, Sing Development, has asked for transfer of sewer capacity from Patriot Park to this particular parcel, which is true. And Mr. Sloan concluded that the township doesn't know if there is any extra capacity and doesn't know if the township board has an appetite to transfer it or if they would want to transfer it to this particular parcel. What we're asking is to let us try, let us go before the board, let us make a deal, make a win-win situation, a situation where we propose a planned unit development. So originally, when we came forward, we were told that the first step is a sewer study. So we paid our $5,000 for the sewer study, and they looked at it. And while there is additional capacity, again, it doesn't say where that additional capacity should be allocated. It's at the purview of the township board to decide where that goes. At total buildout of every single parcel in Canton Township, there are some surge areas in the plan that can be remedied through different engineering, but that's at total buildout if everything was built out per the master plan, which, as I've indicated, the master land use plan doesn't accurately reflect the uses when you exclude certain pieces like the existing Park West piece or the Patriot Park piece. Patriot Park has a bunch of sewer allocated to it under your master land use plan. So step one, we did. We paid for a sewer study, and we found out that with some engineering and with some cooperation with the township, we could have allocated enough sewer to do this project to this property. The question is whether or not the township wants to do that. This request before you tonight is asking you permission to be able to go down that path. The recommendation for a denial says that there isn't currently sewer allocated to this property for that amount that we're proposing, and so you should deny it. That's the whole point of going through the process. So first, the sewer study. Second, we applied with a PUD application, which was not accepted at the township. So what we wanted to do is to say, how can we create a win-win situation for the applicant, for the community, for the town? What would it take? So we first, as Mr. Sloan pointed out, our application details out this dedicated drop-off lane to try to address some of the traffic problems that exist because of the charter school. And the application was not accepted by the township because it was premature. You can't apply for a PUD or a PUD without being consistent with the master land use map. You just can't do it. So for us to try to come and say, okay, listen, here's our idea. We want to continue the existing use that's on this property to the north and stop it at smart transition points, at conservation easements for the Fellow Creek Tributaries, at conservation easements on the east side of the property between the Fellows Creek Estates and this property. We want to do that, and we also want to provide a community benefit to the town, whether it be the dedicated drop-off lane or in some of our other informal meetings and discussions about what would make this feasible for the township, what would make this a win-win for the township itself and its residents, what are some of the other options for community benefit that we could provide? Mr. Sloan touched on one of them, and that is the existing traffic has a low level of service, okay? Well, there is Ridge Road paving going on, and there is Warren Road paving going on, and so I don't know that we can rely on an older traffic study or an older recommendation. But I know that the development just south of here improved that very intersection as its public benefit, the West Ridge Estates project. So did the Polte project further west on Ford Road, when it dragged the water line through the park, water line extension, and did some additional park improvements. So the concept of a planned unit development or a planned development that offers benefits to the town in exchange for certain considerations is not new by any stretch of the imagination. And that's what we wanted to do here, but we weren't permitted to start there. We weren't permitted to sit and work with the town to figure out what a benefit is that might be palatable to the planning commission, might be palatable to the neighbors, might be palatable to the township board because we got tripped up by procedure, which is you got to create a master land use map amendment application first to fix the problem with the existing parcel to the south, which has a RA classification, but it has eight units to the acre density on it. So the only way for you to recognize that the existing apartments at Park West are there is to amend the map because the policies that Mr. Sloan correctly points out say that you got to look at the map and see if there's something adjacent. Is it local or is it regional? It's very, very local. We're talking about 48 acres plus or minus. Half of it is already developed. It's either in a more than half. It's either in a conservation easement, or it's an existing built 203 apartment complex that we're looking to extend. And what we want to do is work with the township to figure out what benefits we could provide as a developer to transfer that underutilized sewer capacity from Patriot Park over to this piece and to preserve that Fellows Creek corridor, that natural wildlife corridor that would connect the existing conservation easement with the park uses, maybe some boardwalks, maybe some trails, maybe a connection for Fellows Creek Estates to be able to go and access the park. So for us to even be able to explore those ideas, we had to take this step. We had to take this step first. And what's in front of you tonight is the question of whether or not you'll consider it, whether or not you'll consider an application that could be a win-win. And one of the things that you have available to you is the township could approve the master land use map amendment, subject to a qualified planned unit development coming forward, so that you're not just changing the zoning, you're not just changing the land use map, you're not approving a conceptual plan. If you scroll down one more, Mr. Sloan, you can see the concept plan that we have proposed. So it's a continuation of the existing Sing apartment development, approximately 150 units, they have 200, so it's a little smaller than what's there, some conservation areas over the natural features, and then a single-family, larger lot, it's medium density, that matches the Fellow Creek Estates exactly in lot size and density. So what we're proposing, what you're looking at tonight is not whether you like this plan or whether we have too many of the blue buildings, too many of the purple ones are too close to the natural features, or whether we've, you know, the underground detention over on the single-family side is putting too many eggs in one basket. It's not what you're looking at tonight. What you're looking at tonight is accepting the application to investigate this thing further with us. By a denial tonight is to say, we won't consider it because the thing you're asking to amend, you're not consistent with it. You're not consistent with the very thing you're asking to amend. You're not consistent with the property that's contiguous to your property. You're inconsistent with it because the map's already wrong. There already is 200 apartments there, but the report says it's RA, so you can't consider it. Or it becomes a regional problem because you have to consider properties a mile and a half away. And so what I'm asking you tonight, while I know it's a tough putt because I come here with a recommendation for denial, and we normally aren't used to that kind of thing because we work with staff, we work with the township, we work with the neighbors, we hold neighborhood meetings, you guys have seen me in your room for 20 years. You know that's the kind of operation that we run when we bring something before you. This is the first step. This is permission to proceed, to put together a plan to put in front of you so you can say, that's too many, those are too close, that benefit isn't enough to trade the sewer. You're not doing any of those things tonight. We're not even asking you to. We're asking you to accept our application, to consider, to bring before, to the board, to consider this map amendment. If an applicant can't get an amendment without the details, without the PUD yet, if an applicant can't get past the first step, why is it even in there where an applicant can put it forth? We've been trying since January to get before the board to say, what's it going to take? What kind of planned unit development would work for you? What kind of benefit does the town need? What does the community need? What do the neighbors want to continue the existing project? A project that's 100% built and 60% leased in one year? The report says we would have to do a market study. We have a market study. We have 115 units leased. It's only been open a year, plus a little bit more. It really started in January, so January would have been a year, but then the pandemic. So we're still actually getting people leasing during the pandemic. They have virtual tours to look through it and everything. My point is that it's wildly popular, and it's right next door. So to deny it on the basis that there's nothing surrounding it like it just doesn't seem fair.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, and I do appreciate your efforts to sway the thinking on this.
Thank you.
And with that said, we're going to go to the commission, and we're going to discuss this.
Very good. Thank you, Chairman.
If you'll just stay close by.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger, what do you think about this?
I thought Patrick made a great presentation, and I go with what Patrick said. I think that we don't need to make an amendment application at this time.
Okay. Is that based upon the sewer capacity or the specific point?
I would say it's based on a lot of different points. I thought he did a great job in covering lots of different points. It's not just one thing. It's all of them. I think it was a great presentation, and I agreed with it.
Commissioner Huber?
I have a question about the consent agreement and just what that was about and what effect that has on future decisions.
Sorry about that. I wasn't involved during the time of the consent judgment, so a lot of the particulars I don't necessarily know. I do know that it's one of the reasons that the township has Patriot Park in the form that it is. But in terms of how a consent judgment creates a precedent for other properties and other adjacent properties, that's something of an unknown. And I say that because part of it is a legal question in terms of adjacency of the property and what kinds of precedents it may or may not allow. But another is from a planning standpoint. For example, I'm going to scroll back up to the future land use map, and this was a future land use map that was adopted with the 2017 master plan, and it was readopted on January 9th of 2018. If you go online and look at our current master plan, it'll say readopted January 9, 2018. So we're less than three years ago is when this map was amended, and it was after the consent judgment. And at that time, as well as the time of the adoption of the original plan, the township declined to change the status of the future land use classification of this parcel.
Okay.
I can also offer a little bit of information on the consent judgment. I also was not personally involved with it, but the consent judgment began with a lawsuit between the charter school and the township. And Sing Development came in and said, hey, I think we can offer you a solution to your legal dispute with this charter school, and it involved property trading. And it moved the charter school, and it moved Sing's apartments, and it gave the township ownership of Sing's property on Patriot Park. So there was a land swap there. This was not a, Sing didn't sue to get apartments. That's not how that happened. That's not how they operate. Sing came in and helped the township with some land swaps to help solve that consent judgment. So the application that you see before you is the way that Sing Development, and I and myself personally like to do it, and that is to work with the town, to find out what the town needs, what the town wants, what we can feasibly do, and put together a win-win solution. So the fact that those apartments are there as part of a consent judgment is in no way a reflection on the developer on how those apartments got there in the first place. It was not a lawsuit between this developer and this township.
And then what does the, so, I mean, I hear, I guess I don't have a strong problem with what Sing is proposing because, you're right, I mean, we do have apartments there. We don't have the normal sort of stepping up from the rural residential to, you know, a more dense zoning area to a very dense zoning area, but we do have a precedent on this corner for apartments. So I'm unclear, Patrick, what would be the, just help me to understand the difference between, you know, we have this property here and it exists, how can we not use it as a precedent if it's not, like, wrong to put it there?
One of the first things that I look at is the existing policies of the master plan and the future land use map. So for example, if when the master plan was adopted, the township decided at that time to make the Park West apartment the eight units per acre and classify that future land use, it would have to have some associated policies with that in terms of why are we classifying this site? uh, why are we classifying this site as high-density residential? And is there any policy in the west or the northwest part of the township outside of Cherry Hill Village where the township wants to have high-density residential or wants additional and, and wants to evaluate it for that? Uh, in some cases, the master plan calls for evaluating different land uses in different areas, uh, but those policies do not call for looking at increases in density like this in the western part of the township. So by way of not putting this on the map when the township could have done that is, is one, only one indication. The other indication is whenever the western part of the township is mentioned in the master plan, it's done so in, in terms of, uh, rural character, lower density. And again, with the exception of Cherry Hill Village, which is mixed-use, multifamily, et cetera. So it has to be both. It has to be the existing policies that call for that type of use in that area, as well as the map and adjacency of other future land use districts.
And then my, I guess, this is my last question. Okay. So, so how did, how did we end up with these apartments that, there then? I don't recall, I don't recall being on the board when that was approved, but I don't.
No, it was, it was.
Wouldn't have come through because it was a.
It was done a long time ago and I was not even on the commission at that time.
I don't think it came through to the commission because of the.
Wait, you have to talk into the mic. It was a, it was a settlement agreement between the township, um, and as Patrick said, the, the schools and Singh. And, and, and I don't know how they came up with apartments for this, um, you know, increasing that density, but it was part of that, that whole judgment and, and we just had to live with it. It wasn't something that was on the plan. It wasn't something that was part of the, the, the master plan or the, or, uh, the, the use that the township wanted, but it was something that they decided, we'll just live with it. And that's where we're at today. Okay. With where the school, the school was originally going to be at the corner and it moved over as a result of, of this whole thing. So, um, I don't have all the details on that. I just know that, that what you see there right now is what we have as a township had to live with.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what we're dealing with now. It's, uh, it's, it's not part of the, if you look at the, the map as Patrick has said, it does not indicate that density there. And, but we, we, we actually have apartments there and that's what we're living with. And so, um, the gentleman is, is trying to, uh, basically just persuade us that since we have it, um, let's go with it and make it better. Did I, did I, did I add that up correctly?
Yes, Chairman Green, I think that's, I think that's fair. You know, I, I would, I would, I would clarify that I wasn't part of the consent judgment. Neither were anybody here. Neither was, was Todd Rankin here with me with Singh tonight. Um, and a consent judgment means all the parties agree to it. So it's not one side forces the other. So eventually, because of the pain of lawsuits and, and all of that, both, there's always some right on each side of it and people just say, okay, let's end this thing and let's agree. And so the agreement was to put a charter school there, to get Patriot Park and to put these apartments there.
Why, why the apartments?
I think it had to do with Singh giving up their property and getting this corner piece that was more suitable for a higher density, to give more property to the, to the township and have Singh have a development property. I'm gonna ask Todd to give a little bit of more background detail on that.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
Good evening. I'm, I'm Todd Rankin. I'm with Singh Development. And, uh, Mike is correct and I was not part of Singh when this happened either. But from what I understand, back in the early 2000s, um, exactly what everybody has been discussing is correct. There was a dispute between the charter school and the township and Singh had stepped in and said, we think we can assist. And there was a land swap. We, uh, Singh actually owned the property on the west side of Ridge. And, um, when we swapped property to the, go to the, the east, we then made the deal with the school and sold the property to the school. And as part of the lawsuit and the consent judgment, um, it was just settled on for apartments. I think that was just something that we requested to assist the, the process and it was granted. I do not know the discussions that took place to get to apartments, but, um, that was what our request was in, in the deal. And, um, it was granted and we were going to build these back in the early 2000s and we just had seen kind of some of the economic, uh, uh, what was on the horizon and we waited. And then we brought it back to life here in 2016, 17 and put it back, uh, uh, on, on our books and, and made it happen and it's there now. Um, so everything that's been discussed is correct, but I do not know the specifics of why and how we settled on apartments.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. Fair enough. Uh, Commissioners Uber, did you have anything else?
No, I, I appreciate that background. Thank you.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes, you said you had conducted a market study. I'm just curious, what price range do you currently rent those apartments for?
There's a, there, we have a broad range of product there. We have one-bedroom, one-car garages that are leasing for, for around 1,500 a month. And then we have up to three-bedroom, two-car garages that are, um, 1,700 square feet that we are getting, um, $2,700 a month for. So it's, there's quite a range depending on the product.
Okay. So, I mean, you, okay, you spoke about affordable housing and that just seems very high. All right. So I'm just wondering, um, Patrick, you had mentioned something about, I mean, this is kind of seems like we're trying to rush through something, but you had said there's another way to do this, to amend the ordinances that were attached to the master plan, rather than pulling the master plan down. And is that correct? You had spoken about having a hearing and?
Um, yeah, there's, there's two ways to do the, the master plan amendment. Uh, the first is an applicant-initiated, um, proposal, and that's just to amend the future land use map. Uh, the second way, and this is the most common way, is a township-initiated, uh, master plan amendment where it's the township that's moving the process. And the township is usually either amending for a single purpose or a group of purposes, or if it's a comprehensive five-year review, the township is looking at everything. So it would, it would be looking at infrastructure, land use, uh, public facilities, natural areas, future green space, in some cases parks. Um, and it's a much more comprehensive review of the policies of the plan as opposed to a future land use amendment that's really supposed to be looked at locally within the existing policies.
Okay. So the sewer capacity study that was done, that was a private study then? That wasn't like, that didn't go through Wayne County and our engineering group? Is that correct?
No, we, we paid the township to do the study.
We did. And you determined, so it was determined basically from the sewer study that they want to take some of the sewer usage from the current Patriot Park and reallocate it over to this apartment building then, the apartments, right? Correct? I'm just trying to clarify.
That's correct.
Okay. But we do not still as a township understand what we wanted to use those, that capacity for in the park. Is that right?
Uh, that's correct. Sometimes when there's, um, a proposal in the preliminary stages, the applicant may commission a sewer study just to know what the available, what the available capacity is. And so the future land use, uh, plan and the sewer plan are designed to be synchronous. Uh, but to do a sewer study, sometimes it, it produces a different result than, than that synchronous relationship between the two plans. So if in the course of doing a sewer study, it is determined that there is capacity in the system, uh, then the next question, and it's mostly a policy question with the township board, is what does the board do with additional capacity if, if it decides to do anything with it in terms of allocating it to one property, some other property, a collection of properties? And if it was the determination of the township board to increase density to, um, to get that capacity almost to the capacity, then I think the township would have to evaluate within that sewer district, those areas where additional density would be needed. But that's just a hypothetical, if the board wanted to entertain additional density within that sewer district.
So you're saying that if we use like, if we transferred the sewer use over to these new apartments, it would limit what we could use in the park?
Uh, possibly depending on, um, the current park master plan, um, and what a future park master plan may, may yield. Uh, a lot of it would just depend on mostly bathroom facilities in terms of, you know, how many bathrooms, what the future use of the park would be.
Okay. Or splash pads or whatever, something like that. It would limit that then. So by denial, you're not saying, you're denial that you wrote, but it's not saying we won't consider, but there is the other process that you were speaking of.
Yeah. The, the recommendation for deny, denial is to, um, deny further consideration of the subject request, uh, which means that the township would not pursue that application any further. Uh, but when it comes time for the township to initiate its update of the master plan, the township would be looking from a regional and township-wide standpoint at a number of different things. And one of those would be housing, not just multifamily, but a number of different housing options and in every area of the township to look forward five years, 10 years, 20 years to see, uh, where we are with our housing, where we've been in recent history and where we see ourselves going. And that requires a lot of study, not just of the infrastructure, but also public participation, impacts on traffic and, uh, living styles over the next several years.
Okay. So this, I mean, this does not, this could be done another way then, basically on what you just said and what you read at the beginning.
Yes, it would just take more time and a much larger regional and township-wide evaluation of our policies.
Okay. Which probably would be better rather than just rushing through this, just to get it done quickly. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ocharia?
Yeah. I kind of agree with, uh, Patrick's assessment because on two grounds. One is that, you know, this, these apartments came up because of a consent, uh, judgment. It was not part of the original master plan. So that really should not be the basis of determining, you know, what kind of housing we want in that area and the density. Uh, so that, that's one reason. The second is also the conservation easement. I'm pretty sure that when these apartments came over here, there was some kind of conservation easement so that, and that's why they were allowed to build, uh, you know, such high-density apartments over there. So now if we again use this particular juncture before amendment to the master plan, it would be like double dipping. You know, you've already got the benefit of building something that's high-density over there with some kind of a conservation easement and now before the next plan with a regional approach driven by the township comes into effect. You know, this is a one-off case when we say, you know, we, we want to again increase the density of the remaining part. So that goes against the spirit of the conservation easement. So I, I kind of lean towards Patrick's judgment and I agree with Patrick.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, speaking for myself, um, I see a lot wrong with this proposal from a lot of different avenues and, and really the, um, capacity is probably at the bottom of, of the list, going to what Commissioner Ocharia just said. If, if, if we were to redesign the township right now, but with some of the same criteria that was originally planned for the northwest quadrant, we'd never put an apartment building where, uh, Park West One is. So to say it's there, so therefore let's expand it, to me is not a good idea. We still want a lower density as we go north through that area. We, yes, we'll live with the apartments because it was a consent judgment, so the court system is, is involved and that's what you do, right? But that doesn't mean that, well, for example, if you were to come by my house and you throw a bucket of paint on, on, on the front of my house, I'm not gonna look at it and go, hey, maybe I should paint my whole, the, the whole front of the house that way.
Maybe if I throw a bucket of paint, you will.
So, so what I'm saying is that that basis for creating more apartments is not a, a, a great idea. Um, the idea of mitigating a problem that the school has before it, which I didn't, I didn't know about until we got this, uh, in the packet, in terms of, of, uh, all the problem letting off the students at the school. And now as part of this, you want to put in a drive that allows, uh, for drop-offs and then they can walk down to the school for, uh, this, this should have nothing to do with the school. The school has its own problems and the school should solve that problem. And the, and the subdivision to the south, Al editorialized, and it should not be stuck, stuck with, with having to deal with the schools, you know, the kids being dropped off there and walking across Ford Road.
If I may, if I may add.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Chairman Green, um, that, you know, in our informal, um, meetings with, uh, with some city officials, um, they agreed with you and they said, you know, we'd, we'd rather not solve the school's problem. We'd rather get something for the township, something that benefits maybe improvements on the park or, or some kind of community benefit. And that's really what we're, what we're trying to do tonight is to have the opportunity. If you, if you approve the map amendment where you, it's, it's amended as requested but subject to an approved PUD, you still, you still have all control over what goes there, how many units and what kind of benefit and all of that. And that's what we were asking to do, to have an opportunity to bring forth a proposal that we could work with the staff and work with the planning commission and work with the township board and work with the neighbors to come up with a plan. And this is, this step one, if we can't get past this, then we can't, we can't even try to do that.
I appreciate that. The, um, the 10-unit, um, proposal, uh, changing that density to two units per acre, um, and then it, it, it looks like it attaches to Fellow Creek, the subdivision. Did it, did, was Fellow Creek even consulted on this? Cause it looks as if that's in addition to their subdivision.
No, they had, they weren't consulted on it. Um, that, that property is owned, um, is under contract, uh, by Singh Development, so that's all part of the property. That's not, that's not their property. There is a stub street at that location for development into this area. What we didn't want to do was to have a crossing on Fellow's Creek. And so if, when we would go through the site plan process, we would meet with the residents. We, we don't even know that we can put a site plan together.
I understand, I understand.
So that's why we haven't taken a step to, to speak to Fellow's Creek. That's, that could change quite a bit when we start talking about where the edges of the conservation, we're proposing a conservation easement on our property as well, where the edges of those go, where the open spaces go, how many units on that side. All of those things could be, um, subject to compromise.
I understand.
Um, but if we can't amend the map to, we, we can't submit a PUD without being consistent.
But that's, but that's messy. That's messy. You, that was thrown in there as part of the whole proposal, this, this, these 10 units. And living in a sub, a site condominium, minimum subdivision like I do, I know that if there was a segment of what appears to be my subdivision, but there's no control over, over that by our subdivision board, there's, there's problems. You know, and so you're gonna have to have a 10, 10-unit subdivision. It's gotta go through the county and all that kind of, kind of BS.
Right.
And those two will have nothing to do with one another except you're gonna have to drive through the one subdivision to get to those 10 houses.
Yes.
That's messy. That's messy because subdivisions now are having to deal with road costs, road repairs, um, you know, so, so how do you, you know, justify that, that kind of thing with their dues? It, it just, I, I wouldn't even want to develop anything like that.
See Glengarry Village for that.
I'm sorry?
You can talk to Glengarry Village for, for how that works.
The big issue, the big issue is density. Um, and I'll just go back to the original, uh, objection that I have. And that is, in trying to keep the density low in that area of the township, we are going against what the, the original plan. And I'm just not saying we couldn't do that, but it, to me, it just is not called for to do that. It just, it, and, and it's really not fair to the people that are living near there who have come before us many times. Um, you know, making sure that we are not changing from, you know, when we went from rural agricultural in most cases, you know, uh, to, to R1, et cetera, et cetera, they were, they were cautious about that. Now we're talking about going to R8? Um, you know, so I, that, that is where I'm coming from with this right off the bat. I mean, I, if, if it was in another part of the township and we already had apartments there and you were gonna expand it, that, no problem. Go ahead, knock yourself out. But in a situation like this, it's not called for in the township, in my judgment.
Chairman Green?
Yes.
If I may, there's one more point, that it might also be against the spirit of the, the consent, uh, you know, judgment, because when the, uh, the consent judgment was made, you know, they probably looked at the density and then, you know, the, the consent or mutual consent was that these many apartments could come over here. And now all of a sudden they're gonna be higher-density housing over there. That again goes against the spirit of the consent judgment.
If I, if I may, Commissioner, the consent judgment didn't cover these properties that are subject to tonight's act.
Yeah, but, but they, they might have looked at the overall neighboring areas while agreeing to the density. to the density of having apartments over there, that the neighboring areas had less density. There's no precedence of more apartments in the neighboring area.
Well, what you're saying, though, is that the consent judgment should ultimately affect our master plan or future plan use, future land use. And I, I disagree with that. I just totally, the consent judgment is what it is, we live with that.
Right.
But I think we have to make a judgment based upon what's best for the township.
Right. My, my point was the consent judgment that was made at that time with all the parties was basically considering the existing densities of the neighboring area. So I agree with you, but I don't think there should be a change in the master plan, because even the consent judgment that was made was a compromise. And the compromise, because of the compromise, those, you know, high-density apartments came into, you know, existence. So we really don't want that, that to be a precedence for us while making a decision and saying higher-density, you know, properties can come into existence just because there are these apartments over there. It just doesn't seem right.
Well, and where do we stop?
What's that?
Where do we stop? If we, if we say, oh yeah, you know, this is adjacent, so it can be...
Like I said, if you throw paint on my house, am I going to paint my whole house now?
Well, you might if I do, I'm just saying, because I got some nice paint colors.
You make good color choices.
Donna, are you ready to make a motion?
I am ready to make a motion. Thank you. I move to deny the request to prepare an amendment to the comprehensive plan, future land use map, to reclassify the said parcels from very-low-density residential, one dwelling unit per acre, to medium-high-density residential, which would be eight dwelling units per acre, and low-density, low-density residential, two dwellings per acre, for the reasons stated in the above analysis.
Support.
All right, I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. Any, any further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Ochoa?
I agree, yes.
Commissioner Graham Hiddak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes. Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
And Chairman Green?
Yes.
We thank you for your time and your consideration, you debated it, you know, diligently, and, and for Mr. Sloan, who I work with closely, I appreciate your hard work and, and, and your review. Just because we don't always agree on the results doesn't mean we don't respect you for what you do. So thank, thank you for your time, and we'll try to come up with something else for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a good night. All right. Our next agenda item, the third agenda item, is the metro opportunities, where we're considering also future land use for property which is located north of Michigan Avenue between Denton Road and Beck Road. Patrick, could you tell us more?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is also another future land use amendment application, and some of the background that I went into with the last application, I'll skip, based on just the general concepts of, and why we amend a plan, et cetera, et cetera. It's all in the written report, so you can read it in your packets, which is also available online on the township website. For the current request, the applicant proposes to amend the future land use plan map of the comprehensive plan by reclassifying six parcels located north of Michigan Avenue and east of Denton Road from medium-low-density residential, which is three dwelling units per acre, to light industrial. The application has also been submit, an application has also been submitted to rezone the subject six parcels to LIR, which is light industrial research. The purpose of the proposed application is to assemble the six subject parcels that are outlined here on the map with additional land to the east that is already zoned, light industrial research, and to eventually construct a warehouse and distribution center for an online retailer. However, the proposal is conceptual at this time and could change based on available development options of the zoning ordinance. As you can see on the map, and it doesn't appear that there's, there's a legend here, but the area that's on the subject site and also to the north and west in orange, that's classified as medium-low-density residential at three dwelling units per acre. To the very north in red, that's classified as medium-density residential at eight dwelling units per acre. And to the east is classified, classified as light industrial, that purple area to the east. As part of the review considerations, again, to initiate an amendment to a master plan, the township of Canton allows an owner or an owner's agent to file a future land use map application for consideration. Because the application before the planning commission is initiated by the owner's agent, our review of this application is limited to the future land use map and how the proposed map amendment complies with the existing policies in the plan. So again, as with the previous application, I'll go through the five criteria, the same five criteria that we looked at previously in determining our future land use map recommendation. The first, and, and this is on the top of page three of seven of our review letter, the first criteria is to review the existing policies of the comprehensive plan. And there are, are a few policies in the master plan that discuss some of the expansion of the industrial areas and locating industrial along Michigan Avenue. And some of these policies are called out in our review letter, and I won't go through each one of them in full detail, but the first one on page 13, it notes that Michigan Avenue is also a high-volume state highway with easy access to I-275 and I-94, and is now experiencing a flurry of new development. Reconstruction of Michigan Avenue has improved mobility of truck traffic, which has spurred a dramatic increase in development of new industrial parks. On pages 14 and 15 of the master plan, it states that Michigan Avenue has become the focus for future industrial growth for the community, and with the reconstruction of Michigan Avenue to support heavy truck use is the home to several new industrial developments. On page 35, in one of the objectives of future land uses for industrial land uses, it states that Canton Township shall provide adequate land for industrial development and direct new industrial areas which are compatible with established land use patterns and public facilities. Also on page 35, in one of the specific policies to an objective, and this is underlined on the type, top of page four of seven, it states that light industrial research use is strongly encouraged to locate in areas with visible access or directly adjacent to the freeway or primary arterial streets, and in areas where the light industrial designation abuts a residential or conservation area. And this is something, for an industrial policy, it's, it's fairly well thought out because it's an acknowledgement that our light industrial, future land use, and I think specifically the light industrial research zoning district, is intended to perhaps be a district that is adjacent to residential districts and uses. And there are some provisions in the light industrial research zoning district that do acknowledge that, that border and provide additional protections for neighboring residents, which I'll get into in a moment. And then finally, there's an industrial development strategy on page 36 of the master plan that states that the township should evaluate the general location and composition of industrial uses on the future land use map along the Michigan Avenue corridor. And so therefore, based on those above policies in the master plan and the proposed future expansion of the light industrial future land use class, we find that the proposal is supported by some of the existing policies in the master plan. So it doesn't necessarily mean that it'll ultimately be approved in this form, but this part of our evaluation, and we put it first for a reason, we look at the existing policies of the master plan to see if those policies are supporting the request or some form of the request that's being made. So based on that, we do find that the existing policies do support the application with no needed changes to the policies to support that. The second criteria is the adjacency or the proximity of the same or similar future land use class. And as we can see on the map, the subject area that's in orange, it's adjacent to a light industrial future land use to the east, and that common border north to south is about 2,300 feet long. So it's quite a long border between the two parcels and the two classes. And as noted in the policy of the master plan, it's underlined at the top of page four, the light industrial research use is strongly encouraged to locate in areas with visible access or directly adjacent to the freeway or primary arterial streets, and also in areas where the light industrial designation abuts a residential or conservation area. Therefore, a light industrial future land use class of the subject site would be consistent with the residential and industrial future land use class in the surrounding area, and also with the existing policies of the comprehensive plan. Finally, warehouse and distribution facilities are special land uses in the light industrial research zoning district, and the LIR zoning district requires a 100-foot setback between a lot line abutting a residential zoning district and an onsite building, loading area, driveway, storage area, or off-street parking area. Therefore, the zoning ordinance provides additional setbacks as well as special land use discretion for warehouse and distribution facility uses in the LIR district. And I think that's important to note because we have a comprehensive plan that is recommending that light industrial, in some cases, be adjacent to residential, but there's also existing standards in the zoning ordinance that support that policy by putting a host of uses as special land uses. So for example, warehouse and distribution centers are special land uses in the LIR. So if the applicant is successful with the master plan amendment, and if they're successful with a rezoning amendment, and they propose a warehouse or distribution facility, they have to apply for a special land use, at which point the planning commission and the township board can exercise discretion. Additionally, the zoning ordinance recognizes the relationship between the LIR district and adjacent residences, and puts in that 100-foot minimum setback. The zoning ordinance requires a minimum 50-foot landscape setback, so it basically takes that landscape setback and doubles it when we have an LIR-zoned property that's adjacent to a residential zone or use. The third criteria in evaluating a future land use map amendment is the feasibility of existing future land use classifications and zoning regulations for site development. The subject site is classified as medium-low-density residential on the future land use map, which is three dwelling units per acre. We frequently see developments in our three district or three units per acre come before this body, and this body and the township board have approved a number of developments at three units per acre. However, with the exception of one of the parcels that has a single-family residence that I think is partially boarded up, the subject sites within the subject area have remained vacant, which indicates that the future development for residential use may not be desirable on the subject parcels. In fact, there are no other areas adjacent to Michigan Avenue that are classified as residential on the future land use map of the plan. On the other hand, the demand for industrial use has grown along Michigan Avenue. Based on the site's proximity to Michigan Avenue, its adjacency to the light industrial future land use class, and the existing policies of the plan, a future land use class of light industrial would be more suitable than the existing medium-low-density residential, which has not led to development based on that future land use class. The fourth criteria is whether this is a local or regional scope of the evaluation. And because the nearest site classified as light industrial is adjacent to the east, we consider this a local condition, especially because it's also adjacent to Michigan Avenue, which has a lot of industrial along the corridor, it doesn't cause the township to have to evaluate the master plan on a regional or a township-wide level. And the master plan recognizes the local relationship of this by calling out Michigan Avenue, the light industrial uses on Michigan Avenue, and the adjacency of the light industrial with residential land uses. So we would consider this evaluation to be a local evaluation with the adjacent industrial zoned and planned property, as well as the adjacent residential properties, and getting feedback from the local residents. The fifth and final criteria is the impact on utilities, roads, and infrastructure. There are some unknowns with the sewer on the property in terms of how does the sewer master plan look when it's planned based on three units per acre versus what could be an industrial facility on the same amount of property? In many cases, the industrial property could use less water, but in some cases it could use more. And we've talked to the Township Engineering Division about those possibilities, and what the Township Engineering Division has recommended, and, and we recommend as well, is that prior to final action on the future land use map amendment application, we recommend that the applicant's engineer demonstrate that the proposed change from medium-low-density residential to light industrial will not exceed the design capacity of the proposed trunkline sewer. This may not necessarily require a thorough evaluation of the system, just a, an analysis of one use versus another use, and, and submitting that for evaluation by the township's engineers. And the final criteria with the infrastructure review is the impact on traffic. Again, we look at existing traffic studies in the area to try to see where they've noted deficiencies and where improvements are on the horizon. The township recently received an application for Fillmore Place, which is a 504-unit apartment development on the west side of Beck Road north of Michigan Avenue, and that included a traffic impact study. The study recommended a traffic signal at the intersection of Michigan Avenue and Beck, and improved signal timing optimization for acceptable levels of service. As we know, there's been a, a light installed at the intersection at Beck and Michigan Avenue, it's been planned for quite some time, and it's been installed this year, and it is operational. The only thing that would remain from that traffic impact analysis is whether the signal has been optimized for its signalization, and on that we defer to Wayne County and MDOT regarding any improvements to the signal optimization. And finally, if the subject parcels are eventually rezoned to LIR, and the applicant applies for a special land use for a warehouse and distribution facility, a separate traffic impact study may be required at that time, and on that we would defer to the township's engineers about the requirement for such a study. So in conclusion, based on the above criteria, we find that the future land use map amendment application is consistent with the surrounding areas and the policies of the comprehensive plan if the following two recommended modifications are made during the review process at some time. The first is that we recommend keeping the western peninsula of the parcel adjacent to Denton Road, and it's, it's this one here where that peninsula comes all the way out to Denton Road. We recommend making that peninsula, retaining it as medium-low-density residential, which would discourage industrial traffic on Denton Road. The zoning ordinance does not allow non-residential traffic to cross residential zone property unless there's actually a road put in there. So by keeping that peninsula in its current classification, that would discourage truck traffic, and by looking at the circulation, that would be an evaluation by the planning commission and the board at the time of a special land use or site plan review. Our second recommendation or modification is that we recommend including a note on the proposed future land use map amendment, that the remaining subject parcels be recommended for the LIR zoning, the light industrial research zoning, which is the least intense of the industrial zoning districts in the master plan, or, I'm sorry, in the zoning ordinance. And the last thing that I want to say is that if the proposed application is recommended for acceptance, and it's, the plan amendment is initiated, the plan process would start by the township mailing notices of its intent to update the comprehensive plan to surrounding municipalities. The planning commission would look at the proposal again at the next meeting and determine if there's any modifications before it submits it to the township board. Once the amendment is submitted to the township board, the township board decides whether to distribute the plan for review by surrounding municipalities. If the board agrees to distribute the plan, there will be a 42-day period where communities that are adjacent to Canton will be allowed to comment on the plan. And at the end of that 42-day process, after comments have been received, the planning commission holds a public hearing on the proposed plan amendment and takes final action on the future land use plan amendment application. So with that, our recommendation is to accept the application to prepare an amendment to the comprehensive future land use map, to reclassify the subject parcels to light industrial for the reasons stated in our above analysis, and to mail notice of the township's intent to amend its comprehensive plan. to amend its comprehensive plan to surrounding municipalities and other agencies required by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. That concludes our report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, and do we have a project sponsor?
Yes.
Yes.
Please excuse my voice. My name is Rick Ratner. I represent the petitioner here. And there's not much I can add to what Patrick has said, and we appreciate his thorough review and his working with us through this process. But I'm here to answer questions for the petitioner, should you have any.
Okay.
And assuming I can answer them.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, he kind of said it all, didn't he?
That was really good.
Thank you, Patrick. I'm just going to kind of open it up to the commission here in terms of what you feel about this area in general and these particular parcels that we're discussing. Did you have a feel for that at all?
No, I mean, I think this makes total sense. I've driven by that empty house for a while and have wondered what's going to happen with that land, but I think that Patrick made a really good argument for...
Okay. Okay, I didn't, I wasn't convinced this time. And I was gung ho last time, all in with you, Patrick. But this time, I guess I'm just, I, first off, I have a problem with us always, you know, going in and changing the master site. It's hard enough when we have people come, and we're just rezoning something, and I get it when it's surrounded by something, but my concern with this is, I'm looking at the people that are living right there along Denton Road, and all of a sudden, they're going to have light industrial in their backyard. And I probably could live with it a little bit more if not only that peninsula, but also the kind of wooded area was able to be there as a buffer. Because there, you know, I think part of what you said was, you know, nobody wants to live next to light industrial. Well, right, and that's what we're doing to the people that are living there, is we're all of a sudden going to put light industrial in their backyard.
My first inclination on this, Patrick, you could probably shed more light on this. When we, when we reviewed the master plan officially the last time, I believe that's when the commission came up with the designation of mixed use on the north side of Michigan Avenue. I believe it was from like Hagerty to Sheldon, on the, just on the north side. And so my first blush at this was, why don't we do that here, too? Because we don't know what the market is going to bear in terms of the light industrial period, and to pigeonhole just light industrial for those, that could backfire and just, you know, just be sitting there, which, you know, I mean, it's, it's just sitting there now, right? But I'm thinking, okay, why not create a scenario where you could potentially have light industrial, research, commercial, and some residential? You could, you could actually have apartments, you know, there could be a cohesive PUD that develops in that area. You know, I know that they have something definitely in mind, but I think we've got to think of a bigger picture for that area, you know, going to the end of the township as to what we want it to kind of feel like. And so that was my idea, was, you could still have, have the light industrial, but as part of a mixed-use designation. And in that way, if it did develop all that way, we could, we could develop, to Commissioner Egenberger's concerns, we could develop certain criteria in terms of buffering from the residential. Who knows? Maybe if it was a PUD that consisted of, let's say, some higher-density residential, that could be the buffer to the light industrial. I think we need to free up some possibilities going forward, depending on who's interested in that property. Any thoughts?
Well, was there some interest in putting something there? A type of a business were you targeting, or you just wanted to change it because you wanted to?
No, we have a very specific warehouse and distribution concept for an online retailer. And there is, in answer to the question on the buffer, there is a huge wooded area there and a big buffer between what we would like to have as the LR, L, LIR. And put that, and maintain a lot of that buffer, so that we really are facing and using the Michigan Avenue corridor, which, as Patrick has said, is being redeveloped and, and a perfect location for what, what a light industrial distribution center is that we're planning to put in. I don't have, we have conceptual site plans that we've looked at, but we haven't presented any at this time, because at this level, what we all, all we want to do is get into this process so we can present that to you as we go along in the amendment to the, to the master land use plan. So that's our thought. We don't, we just think it's a perfect site, and it can be buffered from the residential. And as Patrick said in your, in your land use plan, there is provision for this type of development next to residential, and that's well-established residential on Denton. We're cutting off that little panhandle, as the recommendation said, that will not be in light industrial. But everything to the west, to the east of that is going to be the same as the property east of it, which is the light industrial. So we think we fit in there without disturbing any of the existing development, and we're offering the township a tremendous facility that will bring a lot of jobs and other work to this area for, we hope, quite a long time.
Yeah, no doubt, no doubt. I guess what I'm getting at is that, whereas I want to see you have that opportunity, I'm, I'm thinking of a different scenario, because sometimes the best-laid plans, you know that old one, right? So if we did go through this, and it's a long process to amend that, and it's at LIR, your plans may not have come to fruition, but now we have LIR, and then we'd have to look at that again as to whether or not that's the best use of that, of that land. What I'm suggesting get is a win for you in that if it's mixed use, you still get the LIR. Okay? But if that, if those plans don't come to fruition, we're, then we still have mixed use as a designation. And that can still be, you know, more workable without going through another planning process in order to change it. That's, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about it.
I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure that's an option we have, that we can just say, well, we want to change it and be this.
Right.
I mean, somebody would have to appear.
I don't want, I want to, I don't, I don't want you to object to, to that as a designation if that's what, what the, because it still allows you to achieve what you, you would like to achieve.
Well, if I can interject.
Sure.
We are now preparing both a site plan and a special land use permit, which we are going at right now.
Okay.
We're also submitted a rezoning request. So what we're doing is not, I mean, if the facility's not built, it's not built. But we're certainly moving forward with everything.
I understand.
At one time, so that we get done with this.
Right.
As quickly as we can and get the facility done in '21.
Patrick, I wonder if you could answer, answer a question for me. If it was changed to LIR, how much control would we have in terms of trying to say that they had to have a really big buffer between their building and the residential area? Because, you know, once we change it to something, I know then there's all a bunch of different things that, that we can do and some things that we can't do.
Right. If the entire site, let's exclude the peninsula for, for a moment, and if the entire site were to be classified as light industrial, and if it were to be rezoned as LIR, you, you would have the 100-foot setback that's required by the zoning ordinance. So any, any lot line abutting to a residential zoner use would have to have a 100-foot buffer. In addition to that, you may have some discretion at the time of site plan review and special land use review, mostly at special land use review, because site plan review, if they meet the standards, there's usually very little you can do to go against a standard unless there's a reason to for traffic safety, something like that. So at the time of special land use review for a warehouse and distribution facility, should that be the proposed use, the planning commission could exercise some discretion in terms of buffers. In some cases, that may go above and beyond 100 feet, because there may be in some instances where more than 100 feet is warranted, depending on the, the site-specific conditions of that Short of that, the, the only other way could be, like in the case of the peninsula where we're not recommending including that, a future land use map classification need not follow a lot line. So if there were some site-specific conditions where maybe, like in the case of the peninsula where we recommend backing off that LIR for very specific reasons, if there were any site-specific reasons that were identified during the course of the review, that's something we could look at. But I think to get to that point, we would have to initiate that amendment to the plan and get that process started. And like what we said with the previous application, it doesn't mean that if you initiate the process, that that's ultimately what you're going to approve. You can always come out the other end with something different. But what you do by initiating that is you go through that entire evaluation, the entire process. And it's also an opportunity for the applicant to share more information, should they choose to try to fine-tune that request based on comments received.
Can I interject one more thing?
Sure.
Actually, two more things. First of all, what Patrick says is, well, our direction here, first of all, fits your idea of flexibility, because a special land use gives you a tremendous amount of flexibility that just a site plan does not. And we wanted to do that. Secondly, we're in a situation where we're moving quickly to present to you as much as we can, to sell the project so it's what you want and it fits in. So those two things together should give some solace in this process, and you'll be thoroughly familiar with it. It's going to take a few months anyway, if we can initiate it right now. And we really want to get as much in your hands as quickly as possible, but we have to initiate it to start that. So the special land use works to your advantage tremendously.
Okay, thank you much. Any other comments?
Yeah, so the panhandle, you said that would stop trucks from going north of that. Does that mean you'd have to enter and exit along Michigan Avenue, or they could go, they could go all the way up to that panhandle and turn into the property?
No, we're not using it for access.
Okay, so just, just along Michigan Avenue then?
Right.
Is that something that could change later on, though, in backfire?
Well, not if we agree to it.
Okay, so it would be something that we would, we would agree in terms of granting the special land use?
Right.
That would, that would tie that off, because I would hate for trucks to be going up Denton Road in front of those houses.
Right. Yeah, and so in the zoning ordinance, it's not permitted for non-residential traffic to cross residential-zoned property. So by keeping that panhandle in, in its current residential zone, that's, that's one of the protections.
Correct.
And the only way to get access is if they were to get a road approved from Denton Road into the site where they would actually have a road approved. It, it would be unlikely, I don't necessarily think it would be impossible, but that is something that could be prevented perhaps at special land use. If the applicant proposes special land use at the end of the process, let's suppose the process goes as the applicant has proposed in the applications, and it's the time of special land use, the township could exercise some discretion to prevent any access on the Denton Road and to have conditions recorded so that that ensures that that doesn't happen. So there are a few checkpoints along the way to try to prevent that from happening.
We've also, are amending our rezoning petition to cut the panhandle off.
Okay.
So we're not asking for, for light industrial there.
Okay.
Is there a reason, though, that you couldn't use what Nancy and Greg brought up in terms of mixed use and still do the same thing?
That, that is something that we could evaluate during, during the process. By initiating the application, what we would, what the, what the planning commission would be doing is initiating the, the amendment as, as it's proposed by the applicant, but it could come out the other end as, as something different. There are mixed-use policies in the master plan that are supportive of light industrial research zoning, specifically along Michigan Avenue. So if, if this were to have part of, or maybe all of mixed-use classification, we could review that in more detail and come back at the October 5th meeting and let the planning commission know that, you know, what the options are under a mixed-use, future land use classification.
Well, I would feel better if we could, looking at the model motion, change from light industrial to mixed use. If, if that is not, you know, handcuffing, you know, the potential sponsors and/or us, I say why not go with that?
And to that, there, there are two things that I, that I'd want to, I'd want to note. In Policy 1.5.2 of the master plan, it's under mixed land use policy, and Policy 1.5.2 is called Michigan Avenue Corridor. And under subsection C, it states, "All other areas along Michigan Avenue that are designated mixed use shall allow for the consideration of light industrial research on the north side of Michigan Avenue."
There you go.
So there, there is some supportive language there. And to keep it open-ended, we may want to consider the motion as light industrial or mixed use, just so, you know, we can look at both options, and then it wouldn't, it wouldn't handcuff the, the planning commission into anything. Because what we would do is we would look at the next meeting in terms of those types of future land uses, and then decide what to send to the board for distribution.
Okay, all right. Well, I can go with that. With that said?
Yeah, I just have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
Is it, is it a general practice to notify the residential area about this special land use? Do you think it would be a good idea to, because we don't see any of the public over here, so they don't, obviously, they don't know about it. But would it be a good idea just to get a feeling of what the residential neighbors might feel about it?
That is in our plan. Our plan is to contact people along Denton, write them a letter, and have neighborhood meetings.
Oh, very good. I appreciate that.
That's, that's the next process, right?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
But we have to do that. We just have to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the request to prepare an amendment to the comprehensive, the comprehensive plan future land use map to reclassify said parcels from medium-low-density residential, which is three dwelling units per acre, to light industrial or mixed use for the reasons, the reasons stated in the above analysis, and to mail notice of the township's intent to amend its comprehensive plan to surrounding municipalities and other agencies as required by the Michigan, Michigan Planning Enabling Act.
Second?
All right, we got a motion, a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Egenberger. You guys are consistent tonight.
No, it was...
Actually, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We sounded like.
Graham Hudek, I was, I was asleep at the...
Well, you're both coming from my speaker, so...
Sorry.
Okay, no. And support by Commissioner Graham Hudek. Any further discussion on the motion?
No.
Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
And Chairman Green?
That's a yes.
All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have some work to send to staff. The Tremont Place, formerly Wellington on the Willow, and Metro Opportunities again. Do I hear a motion to send that to staff?
So moved.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's see. We are rescheduling one of our meetings. Looks like November 2nd meeting, because it's a day, I think there's an election coming up, right?
What?
Is there an election coming up the day after that?
Wait.
Moving, moving to Nov- Moving, moving to November 9th. Anything else from staff to talk about, anything, before we go?
Uh, no. If we want to have a motion to reschedule that, and it's for the exact, exactly those reasons, is there's a polling place here at the theater, so while they're setting up the polling place and having a meeting, probably wouldn't go well together.
We have to actually do that in the motion? Do I hear a motion, too?
Aye, so moved.
Support.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there any, one question we had before the meeting started, Patrick, is, is, we can't do these meetings via Zoom, we must meet in person? I'm asking.
Uh, that's something that I think we may need a legal opinion on, because some communities have done Zoom meetings, others have shied away from it. And the biggest concern with any public hearing is that people get notices in the mail, and if they attend by Zoom, if their Wi-Fi happens to be out, or they have a slow connection, or the meeting gets Zoom bombed, it, it could create a problem for someone who wants to participate. Now, people might not come to the meeting because they have car trouble or scheduling conflict, but nevertheless, we would be meeting our obligations by holding the, the in-person meeting based on the act. So it would be a legal question of can we hold a public hearing and still meet the requirements of the act? Another would also be logistics. We would need one or two other people managing the Zoom, filtering the public comment, not, not filtering the comment, but, but getting it lined up so that when someone's ready to go, they go, make sure the connection's good, that they can be heard.
The trustees, the trustees do it, and I don't, I don't know that they've, have they had any problems, Ann Marie?
No, we've had, I mean, we've had public hearings that way. We have, and it's a lot of, I mean, there are people, we have to have a captioner, that's required, so you have to have someone do closed caption. And another thing is that you manage two lists, and so you manage, like us up here is one level, and the audience is the other, and then you have to let people in one at a time. But it does get tricky with people that can only use phones, you know, that they can't get Zooms. You can just call in.
Yeah.